February 10, 2022, regular meeting of the Hendersonville City Council. We start our meetings with a silent invocation for people to meditate or pray as they choose, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you will rise, please. You'll join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have the sign-in sheet? All right, we have two people who have signed in for a public comment. I have one digital public comment. If there's anyone online who would like to comment, if you could just raise your hand so I can get a count of how many people it will be. See anyone raising their hands? One person? Okay, thank you. So that's four, so about three minutes apiece. If you would limit yourself to that, I would appreciate it. And we'll start with the people here in the room. First is Indion Jackson. And you know the drill. Name and address with the clerk's record, please.
Hey, okay, Indion Jackson, 11 Mountain Road, Hendersonville, North Carolina, 28791. All right, so let's talk. I feel like I have so much time at school board meetings, you only get one meeting, so it's like I don't even have to speed through it. But we're celebrating, we have a lot of things to celebrate here in Hendersonville this year. You know, one is the 175 years of being a county or being a city. And one other celebration that we want to bring forth to the table is a celebration of 50 years of the Green Meadows community. It was established in 1972, and it's 2022, so 50 years ago, Green Meadows was established. Prior to that, we all knew it was called Brooklyn. And that establishment for Green Meadows was, you know, it's bittersweet because we know that that came under urban development and a lot of black people lost property and government gained property. However, we have so many sweet memories in Green Meadows, and with that being a community. A lot of families were recently affected by death that were staples in that community, the Wright family, the Rudisill family. And it would be nice to just have a celebration of the community. 50 years in the making. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Gash.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Gash. My address, 705 Sacone Drive, Hendersonville, North Carolina, 28793. All righty, so I just wanted to offer my thanks and congrats to the city of Hendersonville. I'm happy to see the way that you are celebrating Black History Month, highlighting men and women who paved the way, walked with dignity and strength in the face of much injustice, and helped build this city that we now enjoy so much. And though I do not live in the city, I do teach at Hendersonville Middle School. And also, my husband and I, we pastor a church just there on First Avenue at Speak Life Community Church. And as a teacher at Hendersonville Middle, I want to let the council here know and just to let the audience know that we are celebrating Ninth Avenue School Day on February the 18th. In the past, we've been able to have our alumni come in. They usually are in the library, and we have our students able to come through and talk to them and reminisce, and they'll be able to tell our students about what it was like for them going to school there in the days of segregation. Of course, with COVID, things have changed, but we still want to honor what that school stands for, the brave men and women, the strong men and women whose legacy still linger in those halls. And so on Friday, which is the 18th, we are going to be inviting alumni. Some, well, we can't invite as many as we would in the past, but we do have a few here, some of our community leaders, who will come in, make announcements to the school, and just be part of what we are calling the Ninth Avenue School Day. And so I just kind of, I'm very proud of what our school is doing, and I just want to let you know and to let our community know that Ninth Avenue School has not been forgotten. We are the tigers just as much as we are the bear cats. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could have the online person, please unmute.
Lynn Williams, you've been unmuted.
Okay, thank you. If you could restart the timer, thank you. Hi, Lynn Williams, Chadwick Avenue. First, I wanted to thank Councilmember Smith for voicing how many residents feel around asking for a fair voice with development projects within the city and the need for community support and advocacy. And I ask for Councilmembers Roundtree and Simpson to please give your public support of these ideas, as well as administrative support towards a more equitable process. Secondly, my public comment tonight is in regards to the preservation of historic Boyd Park. I'm Laura E. Corn Minigolf. This is my third update in the past three months. The HPC now is officially and formally requesting, via letter, inclusion and participation in the planning process with regards to Boyd Park and Laura E. Corn Minigolf. For the past two years, the community has requested preservation of Boyd Park and Laura E. Corn Minigolf, with even a petition of 1,600 petitioners. Within the past six years, the city has invested in ADA ramp, sidewalks, accessible bathrooms, new lights, refurbished courts, all according to the Green Space and Parks Plan. Councilmember Smith's suggestion, quoted in The Times News, to consider putting the Fire Department Administration in the City Hall Building is a great idea. We could still build the fire station. We could preserve Boyd Park. We could save money instead of building a new admin building and parking lot. We could save $135,000 in vehicle locating Minigolf. Let's see, a key takeaway from the State Preservation Office, besides the importance of preserving the actual physical golf course on Boyd Park, is that if we were to relocate the golf course, that then you have the historic, the loss of historic use at both Edwards Park and as well as Berkeley Park and the historic stadium. Another note, Mr. Phillips mentioned that Berkeley Park may be deeded with restrictions for park use only, and will you be working with the county to ensure collaboration of new projects? I please ask that you please postpone the motion for the Consent Agenda number 5F of tonight's consent agenda, which is to approve the contractor for Edwards Park. And instead, because it says that these are for items that are not controversial in nature, yet I find this one to be very controversial, and to please postpone this with further discussion after consideration of the letter from the Historic Preservation Commission. And to please, you know, invest in the authority of this committee that you have created, and please go visit the Washburn property as well over the next month. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. The one digital comment is from James Shakur, 618 Glover Street, Hendersonville. It is, "Please expand Boyd Park and relocate the fire station from 851 North Main Street to one of the many derelict sites like the abandoned auto detailing building at 924. You will improve quality of life and beautify downtown with an enlarged park and help solve urban blight." Thank you, Mr. Shakur. The next item of business is consideration of the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have changed on the agenda? Or if not, a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and it is approved. Consent agenda, is there anything anyone would like to have moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda so it can be discussed? If not, a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move the City Council to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and the consent agenda has been taken care of. All right, presentations. We have several very interesting items this evening. First of all is our quarterly MVP recipients. Have any with us tonight?
Yes, ma'am, I believe we do.
All right.
I know Nathaniel Davis is here, so I'll ask Nathaniel to please come up. I do not think that Randall, Randall was out sick today, right, Nathaniel? So, Mayor, I'll give you, I will give you Nathaniel. So first of all, I want to recognize Nathaniel because he's only been with the city for three months, and he's already being recognized as one of our MVPs. Nathaniel works in our solid waste division with Randall West, and he's been recognized tonight because after the holidays, as we were all cleaning up with all our Christmas paper and everything that goes along with Christmas, we were picking up the solid waste, and we went by this home, and it was, it was not on the regular pickup day, and the resident forgot to put their solid waste out, and Nathaniel, and they were running out to bring the solid waste out, and Nathaniel and Randall stopped the truck and went and helped this person pull the solid waste up the driveway, which they didn't have to do, but they went above and beyond, saw this young lady struggling a little bit, and helped her get the solid waste up. They stopped the truck and slowed their day down a little bit. So we just want to thank Nathaniel for the job that he did, and also Mr. Randall West, and we'll present that to him, but thank you for going above and beyond, so.
So this is in recognition of your willingness to go above and beyond your job duties. The Service Excellence Team voted you to receive quarterly MVP recognition. Thank you for showing ownership and professionalism to a resident slow to get their garbage out on a holiday week. Congratulations on the job well done. You are a part of what makes the city of Hendersonville the wonderful place it is to live, work, and do.
Brantley, Brantley in Austin here. I don't see them. These are two of our utility department folks. They were being recognized because this past fall, when we had a touch truck event, Ms. Luanne Welter put that together for us, but these two gentlemen took it upon themselves to take the vehicles, basically detail the vehicles, go and clean them, make them look well-presented for our folks, for the community, for the kids to come touch the truck. And so really, that was above and outside the job that they had to do, outside their normal work they'd already done that day, so we wanted to recognize Brantley and Austin for a job well done also. And then the last two, I don't see Andrew and Paul, also Andrew Jones and Paul Williams, also with the utility department. This is, again, a particularly exciting recognition that these two gentlemen, we had a resident who had a water leak on a water line that went across country, went across private property, is an old water line, and they were without water for three months because there was a little bit of a property owner disagreement. And so Paul and Andrew found a way to relocate the water line, put it back in the city right away, and we went and installed it, and were able to get that resident's water, but at the same time, we eliminated a problem that possibly could have reared its head again in the future. So I'd like to recognize Paul and Andrew for going above and beyond the call to.
Okay, so many thanks to all of our employees and especially these quarterly MVPs. All right. Black History Month recognition.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Volk, members of City Council, I would ask Mr. or Ms. Lawrence to please come to the podium, if they would, and would also like to ask all members of our Diversity and Inclusion Committee and our HPC to please stand in the audience if they don't mind. So the city staff took a recommendation to, first to the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, and then ultimately to the Historic Preservation Committee to recognize the Landina Guest House, which is located at 710 First Avenue West. The house served as a location where African-Americans could rent a room during segregation with private baths and meals. It was listed in the 1960 and 1961 Negro Motorist Green Book. In addition, and before I go too far, it was quoted to say you could rent a room with a private bath with meals to satisfy. Hollis Tea and Ozzy Landrum were the providers. In addition, the guest house served as a community gathering spot for African-Americans. Ms. Lawrence was telling us that used to have dances and meals and all kinds of great community events at the house, at the guest house. And so we felt like, we took it to the Diversity and Inclusion Committee because we are aware that the limited number of historical markers recognizing African-American historical sites in Hendersonville, we felt like the historical marker was appropriate and a positive step recognizing the contributions of African-American community. The Historic Preservation Commission on January 19th agreed with us and approved the placement of the historical marker. We will be using historical preservation funds, so thank you, Madam Chairperson and Vice Chairperson. And so we'll be put those up. You see a copy of, or a draft of what the monument, or the historic monument will look like. We'll get that ordered and get that placed, and we felt like it was appropriate to do this tonight in recognition of the historic, of the Black History Month. So the Lawrencees may have something to say, but I do ask the City Council to take formal action to make this historical marker a reality and place it at 710 First Avenue.
Okay. Would anyone like to make that motion? Don't fight over it.
Madam Mayor, I move that in honor of Black History Month, that the City Council, excuse me, approve the placement of the historical marker at 710 First Avenue West in recognition of the Landina Guest House.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and that will be done. Now.
First of all, I'd like to thank the city and the Preservation Committee for recognizing the contribution that the Landrums made and the sacrifice they've made. And we're just so honored that we are stewards of that guest house. It's still in the back, still being used, it's under renovation, but this is a dream being fulfilled. And once again, we thank you so very much.
Okay. When it is installed and unveiled, we'll have to have another ceremony. Okay.
Melinda's cooking.
Yeah, Melinda, you having us over to eat, right? Oh, you gonna have us again?
Right, so two more updates on very exciting projects. First of all, Hands On Children's Museum. Joseph Knight, please.
Good evening, honorable members of the Hendersonville City Council. My name is Joseph Knight, and I have the privilege of serving as the Executive Director of Hands On Children's Museum. Since the very beginning of our organization's history, Hands On was built and is sustained by the generosity of the Hendersonville community. Thanks to the forward-thinking and strategic leadership of Hendersonville City Council, Hands On is poised to reach new and exciting heights in 2022 and beyond. Nearly one year ago, Hands On Children's Museum was at a very critical and pivotal point in its history. With the six-month mandated closure brought on by the pandemic, followed by another six months of strict occupancy restrictions, the future growth and development of the museum became uncertain. Prior to the pandemic, Hands On experienced many successful years of both attendance and revenue growth. Since opening our doors to discovery nearly 15 years ago, we have impacted the lives of over 450,000 people throughout western North Carolina, with an annual economic impact of over 1.2 million for the city of Hendersonville and Henderson County economy. As you may recall, last year, we approached the city of Hendersonville to develop a unique public and private partnership to develop the People's Museum and Walk of Fame. This new multi-generational learning experience is designed to celebrate the diversity, culture, and history of Black, Indigenous, and people of color. Thanks to the generous five-year funding commitment from the city of Hendersonville, Hands On became positioned to achieve its goal of not only creating the People's Museum and Walk of Fame Gallery, but to also raise the additional funds necessarily to completely renovate and expand the children's museum from 4,000 to 13,000 square feet, positioning Hands On to be one of the largest children's museums' experiences in western North Carolina. Thanks to the support from the city of Hendersonville, the museum was able to raise over $450,000 within just an eighth-month period in 2021. This public-private partnership between the city and Hands On is an amazing example of what can happen when a community comes together to prioritize access to STEM, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, art, and cultural learning experiences for its citizens. Within the coming weeks, we'll be releasing some very exciting information about all the new and amazing world-class learning experiences that will be made available to the children of Henderson County. But tonight, I'd like to talk with you about the People's Museum Walk of Fame. It is Black History Month, and I'd like to give you just a sampling of some of the amazing experiences that the citizens of our great city will be able to experience at the museum. We have designed the People's Museum and Walk of Fame to be a multi-generational learning experience, meaning that the exhibits that we have are designed for both child and adult learners. We've taken a unique approach about the exhibits, discussing the major eras of history as it relates to Black, Indigenous, and people of color. We talk about several eras of history. We start off with slavery, the abolitionist movement, emancipation, the Jim Crow era, and the civil rights movement. We also discuss the unique history and contributions that people of color have made to the city of Hendersonville and Henderson County. There are so many amazing stories and histories that we unveiled as we've gone through the development process for the exhibits, and I think our communities will be quite surprised to see that Hendersonville, Henderson County, has quite a bit of unique Black history. In addition, we also have some amazing exhibits that we're designing that celebrates the unique history and culture of the Cherokee and Latinx communities. We'll have a beautiful and wide variety of artwork and artifacts and reproductions on display that will captivate the imagination and stimulate the mind. The People's Museum and Walk of Fame Gallery will also feature quite a bit of high-end technology, such as high-powered microscopes, touchscreen kiosk systems, interactive maps, and even a digital storytelling wall, when people who visit People's Museum can actually hear the oral histories told from local people within our community. At this time, we are working hard to complete the exhibit work within the museum, and we anticipate having the entire expansion and renovation project completed by early to mid-spring. Again, we'll be releasing more exciting details about the other work that's underway at Hands On within the coming weeks, but one is to take some time tonight to give the council an update about the investment that was made into our museum. We are very fortunate to be in a strong position as an organization, and it is because of unanimous, the unanimous support of this City Council that we are here where we're at today. And with that being said, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have about the People's Museum, about People's Museum Walk of Fame, or about our expansion in general.
Anyone have questions?
Joseph, are you still taking donations? If anybody is listening, or we have some great news writers, if there's still ways that the community can help out, can we tell them where to go?
Absolutely. So we are still actively accepting donations. Donations can be made online via our website, handsonwnc.org. You can also drop off a donation in person if you'd like. Our offices are open during the renovation, Monday through Friday, from 9 to 5. We're also looking for artifacts and stories as well that we can use to develop new People's Museum exhibit experiences. So if anyone has any unique artifacts or stories they want to share with us, we'd welcome a conversation.
Joseph, is there an opportunity for, if any of the council members want to get a behind-the-scenes tour of the construction? We've got some hard hats, so if any of my council members, can we possibly arrange that, just to see the progress? Do you think that'd be possible?
Absolutely. Right now, we're in the middle of some electrical work for the back wing, but I think after we get through that, we can arrange that.
That'd be great. I know, I know the council's very interested in what's going on behind the closed windows and everything, so.
It's a bit of a mystery, but I think when people see the final product, they're going to be very amazed of what we've been able to accomplish. And again, it's just a testament to our city having the forward-thinking, strategic vision to continue to invest in the museum even during a time of uncertainty with this pandemic. You know, there were some museums that did not survive, and some who are on life support, so to speak, within this state. And Hands On is in a very fortunate position to not be at that place.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm looking forward to seeing what's happening. And next, the Acusa Trail update. Chris Burns.
Yeah, Watson, you think that the City Council is still meeting down at City Hall? It's a long run to get down here on time. But thank you for having me in here. My name is Chris Burns, and I've been on the Friends of the Acusa Trail Board since about 2013, when Chuck McGrady and Hunter Marks and several of us got together and started it. And tonight, I'm going to speak to you and give you an update on the Acusa Trail, but I'm going to speak to you with basically three hats on. So I am a board member of Friends of the Acusa Trail. I'm on a joint committee with Conservancy Carolina and Friends of the Acusa Trail. We're under a $6.5 million capital campaign to raise funds. And then I'm also co-chairing, what am I, the Vice Chair of the County's Rails to Trails Advisory Committee, I believe is what they're calling it, the RTAC for short. So I can answer questions on a lot of different fronts, and you can yell at me on a lot of different fronts. I'm used to that, too. So the first thing I want to do is, I do want to start out and give you an update because I know that we've got some relatively new council members here, but I want to give you an update and take you back in time to how successful that this project is because of what this council and previous councils have done in the past. So if you step back and you look back 13, 14 years ago, we actually, the city actually got a grant through DOT to do a planning study for the Acusa Trail. And I talked to my good Rotary buddy, Mayor Volk, and said, you know, Barbara, this is a great idea, but really what we need is an economic impact study to make this thing work and really see what the dollars are going to be to this. And she said, well, Chris, that's great and wonderful, but that costs 40 grand that we don't have. And I said, well, are you telling me if we raise that money, we can do it? And she said, yeah, if you raise that money, we can do it. In about 13 days, we had enough money that Mayor Volk called me and said, Uncle, we got enough, let's move forward, we'll get the economic impact study. I will also tell you that this council was the very first public entity to endorse the idea of the project. You guys have been very, very instrumental in this project from the very start. I will also tell you, even though he will not want to take any credit for this, but your city manager has been my confidant along the way and has pulled me out of the weeds multiple times in being the glue to some of the pieces of this as we were trying to negotiate this deal and get it done. So we are really, our board is unbelievably appreciative to what you guys have done for this project. I do want to give you a lot of good news, and then we'll, you know, take questions to end, but one of the big pieces of good news you've probably seen, the county has moved forward, they are in the process of negotiating with Vaughn and Melton right now, an engineering firm, to do the planning, engineering, and the permitting work to start the construction of what we thought was going to be the first phase of the Acousta Trail. The second piece of good news is, is that DOT, with the MPO grants that came out last year, which city of Hendersonville successfully applied and was a recipient of one, a lot of the other recipients have not quite got what they need from a match perspective, and DOT has come to us or come to the county and said, you know what, we know we approved you for phases one, two, and three over a four-year period, go ahead and consider phases one, two, and three to be one phase and start moving forward. So, right now, they're, once they negotiate with Vaughn and Melton and DOT does their piece, once the planning of this starts, it will be for the, what we always consider to be the first three phases of this trail, which is roughly six, six and a half miles that will start downtown Hendersonville and take it out almost to the French Broad River. In terms of timing on that, it will take pretty much this year to get the permitting done, the planning, the design work done, the public input done. We hope that they are able to contract with a construction firm and start construction around first quarter of 2022. And that first six, six and a half miles should be about an 18-month project. So, that's what we're looking at in terms of getting that on the ground. Other good news that we have, the, as you probably know, the corridor was left in a much better shape than what we ever imagined that it would be. Early on, the railroad told us that when they took the crossties and the rail line out, that it would be like a washboard, and that it would be unwalkable, the ballast would not pack because it's too big, and you were just going to have a mess out there until we came back in and hired a contractor to fix it. Well, they hired a different contractor who did it in a much smaller fashion, and they left the trail in a lot better shape than we thought they would. Secondly, that ballast that shouldn't pack has never been cleaned, so it collects a lot of stuff. It packs down very, very well, and you can ride a bike on it. So, that's a great thing, but it also comes with some challenges, too. So, one of the things that the county did is they came to Friends of the Acousta Trail and said, could you guys help us to clean this thing up, because we need to get this thing workable as soon as we can? So, Friends of the Acousta Trail has been collecting email addresses for 13 years now. We've got about 3,000 people on our email list. We sent out a volunteer work day that was good for 50 people, and we had 300 volunteers try to register. So, we put that volunteer work day together the day before the snowstorm, and those 50 volunteers went out in the freezing cold, and they cleaned 4,000 pounds of trash that went to the convenience center, and another untold tons of wood debris and crossties and other things that they've piled up that the county has been taking out. So, those 50 volunteers did a ton of work, and I will tell you, they came from three different states. Many of them were local, but some came from South Carolina, some came from Virginia. That's how much of a draw that this has already. But the county is committed to try to get it available for people to get on as soon as we can, even before it's actually going to be paved. They are trying to contract for an engineering study now to look at the overpasses, the trestles, the bridge, to see what condition they're in and what can be done between now and when the construction is done. So, last piece of good news, we estimate that the cost of the entire trail, Henderson County and Transylvania County, is going to be roughly $32 million. That was the estimates that we've had for quite some time that have been updated over the last 18 months or so. We assume that we are going to be able to get some sort of DOT funds, federal funds, state funds, that are going to pay for roughly 80% of that. So, that put us in a position of having to raise about $6.5 million if we want to have the 20% match to do the entire 19.5 miles of the trail. So, we started a $6.5 million capital campaign about four months ago. We have commitments to date of about $4 million, so we're well on our way of getting there. Now, we'll say the first $4 million's the easy part, because that's when your biggest donations come in. So, we're still working, but we're getting a lot closer. It's been, it's definitely been really, really good. So, things are moving forward very, very well. So, now, I'll give you just a couple of the challenges that we've got, and I'll take some questions. Challenge number one, you guys are probably very familiar with this, but when we started negotiating with WATCO early on, they told us that this corridor would start at Canooga Road, and it would go through to Brevard, roughly where Oscar Blues is now. So, great, wonderful, you know, we'll pick up more of it as we can get it down the road, but we took what we could get. We negotiated for that piece of the corridor, and the county went ahead and applied for the MPO grants, same grant that you guys applied for, and was successful in winning for the first three phases or first six miles of this trail. Not too long later, I was sitting in a meeting with a couple of folks from the railroad, and they said, you know what, we didn't think through this very well. We don't think we can push cars across Main Street and King Street to get storage. How would you guys feel if we just gave you another half-mile trail, and you guys could have it over to South King Street? And we let them twist on a little bit, and we said, okay, fine, we'll take it. So, we do have the corridor that starts the south end of King Street down here, but we did not have the MPO grants that covered 80% of the construction for that half-mile. So, the county has been actively talking to the MPO and looking for other grant sources. The county is committed to trying to find another grant source to help us cover 80% of the cost of that piece of it. So, we are still looking for those, and we're still working on that now. Yeah, I'm not going to come to you with a challenge without a potential solution, so I'll tell you what we're doing to try to fix these as well. So, we are actively looking for a way to fund at least 80% of that. The second challenge that we had, as I'm quite sure that you guys are quite aware of, too, is construction costs are not quite as good as they were a year ago. So, we do have the worry that as we start talking to construction firms, that it is going to cost more. Even though our estimates, we tried to figure that in, I do have concern that they're going to be higher than what we think they're going to be. Don't know that yet, we're not to that point, but that is my biggest concern. There again, when we applied for those grants, we tried to build in every conceivable thing that we could. We actually used the Alta Greenway Study that was done back in 2012, which I will call the Cadillac version of the trail, because it comes with a lot of parking areas, a lot of public spaces, and just a lot of amenities that would make it a really, really, really nice trail from the get-go. So, we do have some ways that we could value-engineer to possibly bring some cost down, but that is a concern that I do have as we start moving further into this. I will say that if you asked me a year ago or two years ago, if we'd have been this far along, I would have told you we're being crazy. I'd have thought there was no way we'd get this far this fast. So, it is, if you've ever read the book Good to Great, the flywheel is definitely rolling faster and faster and faster. So, we are moving really quickly. So, that kind of gives you the latest, greatest of where we are as of yesterday. So, any questions I'll take from you guys? Yes, sir.
The extra portion that goes to King Street, is there a cost, I mean, estimate on that portion?
There is. Marcus Jones went ahead, the county engineer, went ahead and put a cost based on that, based on the crossing Main Street and the other things. The cost that he has on that is roughly $1.6 million.
Is that just construction, or is that research and design?
It's everything. That's a loaded-in cost.
Okay.
Other questions?
Oh, y'all are making it too easy.
Chris, the part of $4 million match, I assume that includes part of the contribution from the TDA that's been set aside for a period of time?
That is correct, yes. That $4 million, about 1.5 of that is the estimated from the TDA. I'm sorry, 2.5 is estimated from the TDA. Because we estimated based on their, essentially, that is about 1% of the, or 1 penny of the occupancy tax, and that is what the TDA agreed to do for a period of five years. Based on the audited numbers that they had when we asked them for that, that was roughly $500,000 a year.
When was, oh, I'm sorry.
What do we know from the other end?
There's actually good news that comes out of there as well. The, about four months ago, the city of Brevard made the decision to say that they would take the trail on and be the construction entity for Transylvania County. So, they asked the county if they had any problems with that. The county said, no, you can have it. So, the city is the one up there that's planning on moving forward. They are actively, you know, they said, Brevard, Transylvania County is not part of the MPO, they're part of the RPO from a DOT perspective. So, they don't have the same grant dollars that we have access to in some ways. So, they have applied for a raised grant to the federal government. I think this was their third or fourth year of applying for that. They did not win it this year. They are going to reapply again next year. That would fund the entire construction up there. They have applied, to my knowledge, for at least four other grants that would fund at least some of the construction. We've got about 12 miles of this trail that sit in Henderson County, they've got about eight and a half, nine that sit up there. They, so obviously, there are four sections, we broke ours into five. So, we're even talking to folks like the Dogwood Trust Fund and some other folks about possibly trying to get funding to do one section of the trail or a couple of miles of the trail, just to get it started. We are actively making some pretty large calls on some businesses up there to try to get those funds together. Their TDA, as you guys have probably seen, has been in somewhat of a state of change because they have been in the position of separating their chamber out from that, and that is, I think that's supposed to take effect over the next month or so. Clark Lovelace, who has been the executive director for both organizations, has decided to go with the TDA, so the chamber is having to look for a new executive director. So, all of those things, I did talk to Clark as late as day before yesterday, and their committee, their board is still taking up the idea. They will, I feel very comfortable, they will get behind this at some point in time. I've asked them for an equivalent gift or donation that we've gotten from our TDA here. So, I do feel good about them, it's just taking them a little longer to get on board, but I think they'll get there. I mean, I've seen a lot of change within the political mindset there just over the last three or four years, too. You know, that, be honest with you, I mean, you guys saw this in the article that came out in the lightning a few days ago, that the one thing, although we have a hard time getting a lot of political bodies here to agree on everything, one of the things that we all agree on is the idea of this trail is a really, really good thing for Henderson County and for western North Carolina. So, I do think overall, people are starting to come on board with that. So, long answer to a short question.
No, great answer.
Do you have one?
That's what I was going to ask.
Okay, all right. Fair enough. Yeah, you may find this interesting, but one of the agricultural properties that I went on to last June, I thought I was meeting with two farmers, and I think there were 40 that ended up being there. It was not a very fun meeting for a while. That farmer put his house and 35 acres on the market yesterday for, I think, $2.4 million, and the trail was listed as the best asset of that property. Even those who haven't been all that far, it are still finding some value there. Any other questions?
Other questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Again, thank you guys for your support and all that you've done for us as well.
Appreciate all the time and effort you and the committees have gone into this. Thank you. Okay, that is the last of our presentations. Let's take a couple minutes. So, if anyone does not want to sit for the business portion of our meeting, you are free to leave. If you would like to stay, we'd be glad to have you. We'll take a couple minutes break.
These cookies are delicious.
It like melts in your mouth.
I feel like I really need a recipe for those.
I feel like I really need a recipe for those.
It's a zoning text amendment additions and definitions of micro distilleries, micro cideries, and micro wineries with supplementary standards to existing microbrewery definition. Please, go right ahead, Ms. Hunter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council members. The city is in receipt of a zoning text amendment application from M&amp;T Distilling LLC. The applicant is requesting that micro distilleries be added as a use in zoning districts that currently allow microbreweries as either a permitted use or a permitted use subject to supplementary standards. In addition to the applicant's request, staff has proposed the following recommendations: that, one, that micro distilleries, micro cideries, and micro wineries be added to the use definition and supplementary standards for microbreweries; two, to add additional standards to the existing supplementary standards for microbreweries; and, three, the addition of zoning districts, CHMU, and Urban Village to zoning districts that currently allow microbreweries as a permitted use subject to supplementary standards. So, this is a map that shows the current zoning districts that allow microbreweries and distilleries, as well as the proposed additional zoning districts. So, outlined in red are districts that currently permit distilleries as a permitted use. Those would be I-1 and PMD. Outline in black are the districts that currently permit microbreweries. And outline in teal are the proposed additional zoning districts, Urban Village and CHMU. So, the zoning ordinance does not have a definition for micro distilleries, micro cideries, and micro wineries, but it does have a definition for microbreweries, and that definition is an establishment that engages in the production of malt beverages as defined in North Carolina General Statute 18B 101. An annual production shall be less than 25,000 barrels. The zoning ordinance does have definitions for distilleries, cideries, and wineries, and those definitions are as follows: distilleries an establishment that engages in the production of spiritus liquors or liquors as defined in North Carolina General Statute 18B 101; cideries as an establishment that engages in the production of hard ciders classified as unfortified wine as defined in North Carolina General Statute 18B 101; and wineries an establishment that engages in the production of unfortified wines as defined in North Carolina General Statute 18B 101. So, as noted in the previous slide, our zoning ordinance definition of microbreweries included that cap of 25,000 barrels annually. Staff wanted to determine the purpose of that cap for microbreweries, as well as if there was a similar cap that would apply to micro distilleries. What is the distilling process? And essentially, just to gather more information in order to determine whether micro distilleries could be added to the current definition of microbreweries in our zoning ordinance. And so, first, we look to North Carolina state law and ABC law. They do not have a definition for microbrewery or micro distilleries, or even craft distilleries, and with that, no reference to production levels, as stated in our current definition of microbreweries. So, then we look to other sources, and one of the sources was the Brewers Association, which is the brewing industry's leading trade group, and they define microbrewery as a brewery that produces less than 15,000 barrels of beer per year and sells 75% of its beer off-site. They also define other subgroups, such as brewpub, taproom breweries, and regional breweries. Most licensed brewers keep their production below 50,000 barrels per year to avoid being forced to use a third-party distributor, thus losing control of advertising and a significant part of their product. And to give an example, so CR Nevada Brewing Company is defined as, or classified as, a regional brewery, in that they produce more than 15,000 barrels per year, but less than the maximum of 6 million barrels annually. So, unlike breweries, North Carolina only recognizes one distillery type, so there's no, all these subgroups, or brewpubs, or taproom breweries. So, we look to the American Craft Spirits Association, which is the only registered national nonprofit trade group representing the U.S. craft spirits industry, and they define craft spirits as spirits produced in the U.S. by licensed producers that have not more than 750,000 proof gallons annually. And proof is a method of measuring the alcohol content of spirits, that's percent of alcohol times volume times two. And also note that spiritus liquors, or liquors, are measured in gallons and not barrels because of the differences between beer barrels and traditional whiskey barrels. So, a beer barrel is equivalent to 31 gallons, whereas a traditional whiskey barrel is an equivalent to 53 gallons. And for a local example, you have Two Trees Distillery out of Fletcher. They produce approximately 20 barrels using the traditional 53-gallon whiskey barrel of aged product per day with a 1,000-gallon system. This comes out to approximately 386,900 gallons annually. So, with that said, or with that in mind, instead of creating four separate definitions for the, for micros, staff is proposing the following definition: so, microbreweries, micro distilleries, micro cideries, micro wineries as an establishment that engages in the production of malt beverages, or spiritus liquors, or hard cider, or wine as defined in North Carolina General Statute 18B 101. Annual production shall be less than 775,000 gallons per calendar year of final product. Now, it's hard to see on the bottom of the slide there, but what we did was just convert the 25,000 barrels into gallons by multiplying it by 31, representing, 31 gallons representing the, using the beer barrel gallons, so the 31, not the traditional whiskey barrel of 53 gallons. So, that's where we got that 775,000 gallons. And as kind of in the previous slide, when talking about Two Trees Distillery and their average annual production amount, which was roughly like 387,000 gallons per year, it's well below the 25,000-barrel mark, or the 775,000 gallons per year. And final product came from, and you'll see later on in the presentation, the, to be clear, between proof gallons and just kind of final product gallons, and I'll kind of hopefully clarify that as we move on. Additionally, staff is proposing to add micro distilleries, micro cideries, and micro wineries to the existing supplementary standards for microbreweries, with the addition of standards taken from the supplementary standards in small-scale manufacturing, which was originally modeled after the supplementary standards for microbreweries. And so, specifically, the square footage limitations for new and existing buildings, as seen in subsection F and G, which were not included in the original supplementary standards for microbreweries. So, essentially, this would add additional restrictions on the size of microbreweries that does not currently exist. And lastly, staff is recommending extending the four uses, or the four micros, into two additional zoning districts, subject to supplementary standards, and those would be CHMU, Commercial Highway Mix Use, and Urban Village zoning districts. Both of these are mixed-use districts that have a focus on additional design standards that are present in the current mixed-use districts of CMU, GHMU, and HMU. When looking to the comprehensive plan, it does not have a dedicated chapter on economic development, so staff looked to understand more broadly the intent of various future land use categories that would be impacted by the proposed zoning text amendment. And those future land use designations included Business Center, Regional Activity Center, Downtown Core, Downtown Support, Urban Institutional, and High Intensity Neighborhood. These, none of these designations discuss breweries, distilleries, or cideries, or wineries specifically, but they do discuss the inclusion of retail, restaurant, and office uses as either a primary or secondary use. And these uses are most similar to the four micros and the supplementary standards for microbreweries, which are intended to provide a customer-facing retail space, so, for example, like a tasting room, to align with these new uses and to keep with the existing character of these districts. Staff also looked to Chapter Four, which establishes a goal to promote downtown as Hendersonville's central gathering place and a focal point for niche retailers and entertainment, cultural, and civic uses, as well as Chapter Seven, which establishes a strategy intended to reduce vehicle miles driven, so it encourages mixed-use pedestrian-friendly development that reduces the need to drive between land uses. Finally, as a job creator, so businesses such as the micro distilleries, or cideries, or micro wineries can contribute to the helpful employment options within the mixed-use areas highlighted throughout the comprehensive plan. So, this was taken to the Downtown Advisory Board during their December 14th meeting. The board asked questions regarding about the capacity limitations if, in place, if there are no state standards like there are for microbreweries, so referencing that 25,000-barrel cap. Several board members asked if allowing distilleries was too much, if we already have had, since we already have several microbreweries, they asked if there could be a limit in place for how many distilleries or microbreweries there should be downtown. And they recommended review by the Economic Vitality Team, which is a subcommittee, and they also were the ones that proposed the addition of micro wineries into the proposed zoning text amendment. Then this was brought to the Planning Board Legislative Committee during their December 21st meeting. The committee addressed the concerns of the Downtown Advisory Board regarding too many establishments in downtown. The committee felt that market forces and the cost of startup, which are very expensive, would limit the widespread expansion of distilleries, or wineries, or cideries, and thus prevent any perceived issues of having too many in one place. They also brought the discussion around the term gallon and its distinction to proof gallons or final product gallons, and felt that clarification was needed to refer to just final product gallons. The committee recommended adding hard cideries as well to the proposal, and they were favorable of the recommendation to include distilleries, and cideries, wineries with production limits and square footage limits, as addressed by the addition of supplementary standards taken from small-scale manufacturing, as well as to expand in the two zoning districts, CHMU and Urban Village. And this was brought to the Economic Vitality Subcommittee on their January 4th of this year, not 2021, meeting. The Subcommittee discussed the updated memo and staff report, basically just from all the information gathered and additional research from the other previous boards and committees, and discussed the proposed amendment at the, since first discussing it at the Downtown Advisory Board meeting. Subcommittee felt that their concerns were addressed by the addition of the supplementary standards of new, limiting the space requirements with new and existing buildings. They were addressed by those supplementary standards, and the Subcommittee was favorable of the proposed definition and the supplementary standards. Then it went to Planning Board during the regular meeting on January 10th. Planning Board recommended City Council approve an ordinance revising the definition, use, and supplementary standards of microbreweries to include micro distilleries, micro cideries, and micro wineries, and extending the submitted use to CHMU and Urban Village zoning districts. And that motion passed unanimously. Then finally, it went back to Downtown Advisory Board on January 11th, and the Board concurred with Planning Board and had no additional recommendations or comments. With that, I will, glad to answer any questions council members may have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Any questions?
Yes.
Practically, what's the difference between a bar and a microbrewery or micro distillery? Is it just a distillery they're making it themselves and serving it, as opposed to a bar just pays for it and brings it in? Practically, is there much distinction between the two? Sorry.
No, no, no. No, you're fine.
I mean, ABC distinguishes.
Okay.
Reduction versus purchasing from a distributor.
Okay.
But, you know, practically, typically, at a distillery that's making their own whiskey, you're going to be able to purchase their whiskey and no one else's.
Okay.
That would be another difference, I would think.
Gotcha.
Unless that distillery has also obtained a license from ABC to sell spiritus liquor. You know, there's differences in terms of the permitting that they're getting through ABC.
Okay. Thank you.
Which would probably include food service and everything that goes along with that.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so we will open this public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this proposed zoning text amendment? Yes, please. If you would come forward and give your name and address for the Clerk's record, please.
My name's Bill McConnell. I'm representing the M&amp;T Distilling. I live at 872 Jackson Loop Road, Flat Rock, North Carolina. Just hear about the zoning change. Right now, we're pushed to industrial zones. We're looking to go commercial, because we're looking at foot traffic, you know? We don't want to go to, say, all the ABC stores in the world, like Two Trees, and other places. We want family, people coming in. We want the history of spirits. So, we're looking more foot traffic like Gatlinburg, Pigeon Forge, people coming in, using local ingredients, and promoting more of Hendersonville. Instead of everybody leaving here to go to Tennessee to see stuff, they'll come to us. So, it brings in more traffic for Hendersonville and puts us on the map even more than what we are now. We've been talking to orchards and stuff, using local products and stuff, and making our sales. So, we'd just like a chance to come in. I also have a zoning, at least contingent on tonight. We've been talking to Mr. Lyle, who owns Maple Street, who bought off Mr. Patty. We saw it, he came up from Miami after seeing us here last time, and met us, and we have a building on contingent of right now, tonight's meeting. So, if it goes well tonight, we can start a federal licensure, we can, and maybe be open within six months or... I just appreciate y'all's time and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this zoning change? Is there anyone online who would like to comment?
Madam Mayor, there are two attendees, excuse me, one attendee with their hands raised on the...
Okay. If the person online would unmute and can add their comments.
Matt, I was just making myself available to help answer any questions during this portion, but I don't have any specific comment. Everything's been answered.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay. So, if there's...
Madam Mayor, I'm not sure, does Lyle, Sheriff, wish to, Lyle, see your hand come up and go down? Just, okay, sorry.
All right, well, seeing no other comments requested, we will close that public hearing.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Mr. Sheriff's hand keeps, I don't know if he wants to speak at this public hearing, but it looks like it's up now, Daniel.
Yeah, well, we'll attempt it. Lyle, you've been unmuted.
How are you? Hang on one second, let me, can I also go video or just voice?
No video, no, sir. Just voice.
Okay. Madam Mayor and council members, I'm sorry...
Give your name and address for the Clerk's record, please.
Okay. My name is Lyle Sharif, and I have a home at 350 Roberts Drive in Laurel Park, and I also am a stakeholder in the 7th Avenue District. I have recently purchased several properties on 7th Avenue East and on Maple Street. You may recognize or have driven by two of my buildings that are under renovation right now. That used to be the Amazing Grace Ministry Building, next to, next to the butcher shop, M&amp;M, and we've recently renovated the 7th Avenue Art Space, which is between Marco's Pizza and Triscuitian. I've been coming to Hendersonville, North Carolina, since a child, attending camp, and as a result of the pandemic, I had decided to make a home out of Hendersonville, having a safe place to travel and be with my family as a result of living in Miami and all the activities going on there. I've made a very serious commitment to the area. I identified 7th Avenue as a very, very valuable area and very similar to developments and we, you know, kind of changing areas in the same areas that I have worked in Miami. I am very fond of the architecture, and I'm committed to taking these buildings and bringing them back to exactly the way they were 100 years ago, and I've made that commitment. I'm working with Dennis Dunlap on everything exclusively, and I've been attending these meetings, virtually, your meetings and other advisory meetings on a regular basis. The last meeting, I had caught wind of this being proposed to be passed for a micro distillery, and I reached out to city, city members and inquired, and I was put in touch with the gentleman, Mr. McDonald, who just spoke before me. I've met with him, I've discussed with him, and studied their business plan, and really got into a conversation with him to really understand who they were and what their vision was, and I am very supportive of what they are looking to do. I think it would be an incredible addition to 7th Avenue and Hendersonville, and I believe in their vision and their business plan. They're both retiring from teaching at Hendersonville High, and their partner is also retiring from another business. They're very committed, very, very intelligent people that are studying the craft of the microbrewery business, not, and, you know, distillery business, and also the actual very intense licensing requirements that they're going to be starting off with. I'm eager to have them as a tenant. I think that Maple Street would really benefit from having them invest their time, energy, and money in one of our properties, and I think it would be beneficial for all. And I hope to be able to speak in front of you in person in the future. I have several things going on, and I would like to also take the time to meet each and every one of you as, anytime that it's possible to do so, when I'm in town. every one of you as, as, any time that it's possible to do so when I'm in town. And that's about it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this zoning text amendment? Okay. Not, we will close that public hearing. Right. Discussion or a motion? Someone would like to read a long motion?
Madam Mayor, I move City Council, sorry, where am I at here? Approve an ordinance revising the definition, use, and supplementary standards of microbreweries to include micro distilleries, micro cideries, and micro wineries in the C1, C2, C3, CMH, GHMU, HMU, I1, PCD, and PMD zoning districts, extending this amended use to the CHMU and urban zoning districts as a permitted use subject to supplementary standards. We find that the text amendment is consistent with the City of Hendersonville's 2030 Comprehensive Plan based on the information from the staff analysis and the public hearing, and because it encourages infill development and redevelopment in the area's plan for high intensity development, it contributes to downtown's role as a focal point of niche retailers within the city, and it encourages mixed-use development that reduces the need to drive. Further, we find this petition for zoning text amendment to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information from staff analysis and public hearing, and because it will promote additional diversity of job opportunities within the City of Hendersonville, it encourages reinvestment in existing infrastructure and commercial real estate within the City of Hendersonville, and it reflects adaptation by the city to changing market trends in retail and craft beverage industry.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of this zoning text amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Ayes have it. Okay. Looking for some more interesting businesses in Hendersonville. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt.
All right. New business. First of all, a presentation of a letter regarding Boyd Park from the Historic Preservation Commission. And who's going to be doing this?
Mayor.
Both of you. Okay.
So I am the current Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, Cheryl Jones. I know most of you, so, good evening.
And I'm Jim Welter, the Vice Chair.
So I think, I'm not real sure we're to start tonight, to be honest. We've presented the letter, so I will be more open to your questions than, than our commentary, but just wanted to explain the context for where this came from. We were approached by a couple members of the public and asked to look into and reopen our investigation into Boyd Park and preserving any historical assets and resources that are there, and collaborating with City Council so that we don't overlap efforts into trying to figure out what is historic there and how do we preserve it moving forward while looking to also accommodate the city's needs and the public's needs there. And so that's where this letter began, was a collaboration with our group of how do we respect the views of, within the different, or differing views within the commission to, to approach Boyd Park, but also how do we partner with City Council? And so what that turned into was a discussion of, is it right for a landmark designation, or are we looking at something totally different? And we realized at that point that City Council has done a lot more research in this area and in their planning than, than what we had done and really have the resources to do. And so our hope was that by referencing some of the ordinances, that we could step under our duties and guidelines to ask, to partner with you, to advise, and also reciprocate guidance on how to address the Boyd Park situation. At this point, we think it's premature to ask for consideration of a landmark. I don't know that we would get to that. There is a lot that has to happen for us to even be there. So our thinking is that it would be more a discussion of what have you already looked at? What are your plans specifically for the preservation and recognition of that structure? What does that look like with identifying the historical resources that are there and the assets, and where do we go next? And so the idea behind the letter was to ask you for an introduction of a formal conversation to work together to try and figure out how we identify those resources and make sure that we preserve them and recognize them in some way shape or form that marries the two goals. So, Jim?
Now, I think the honest, the Committee wanted to make sure that Boyd Park was recognized. We realized that there's not a lot of historical structures there, other than the land that it's on, but could we, could we have some input into what is relocated from the putt-putt and things like that, so that we could actually recognize and maybe have some kind of placard would point to where the Boyd Park originally was?
So at this point, we don't know what the next steps are, because the ordinance doesn't tell us the next steps. And so one of the reasons we're here, and we thank you for the invitation, was to try and figure out where we go next. And, you know, some of this probably needs to happen, is, is open discussion between the two entities, but we're sensitive to the fact that if we all get together, then we've created a public forum where we, you know, have to do input. And so we're looking for guidance at this point of what you would like to see from us and how we can work together to collaborate and make sure that these resources are identified and preserved. So if you have any questions, we're happy to discuss.
Questions or comments?
Well, we have identified, or in the, in the, excuse me, consent agenda tonight, we have begun the process of officially of planning out the park. I guess my question is, would HPC like to sit down and meet with our architects and with them, talk about what things could be brought into the park? I mean, I think that's what you're asking.
Right. I think it's twofold. We, we don't really understand the nuances of what, and we see the general concept and design that the public sees, but we're trying to figure out what will be left of the Boyd Park space and exactly what, what could be there or what will remain. Is everything going to go, or is some of it going to be there? And then from that part, what's proposed for Edwards and relocating, and I think Berkeley Park is also kind of at play, but it's, it's more tangential now. So Edwards and Boyd, right, we would love to get in the discussion and, and figure out what the plans are, and then maybe present a proposal from there.
So also a meeting with the, we're getting ready to have an update here in just a moment, but the design of Fire Station 1, which, how you're talking about from a standpoint of some type of a marker or something there. I mean, that sounds reasonable to me.
Comments, questions?
I just have a question. So are you, you guys are preserving sites that are deemed historic by what...
Our charter in the city ordinance actually has to preserve landmarks. It also has for the cultural education and preserve cultural aspects of the city. Doesn't just list it, it doesn't restrict it only to structures.
There are three avenues that something can happen. We can self-appoint and nominate a property, and then the property owner has to consent. So we could come to the city and say, we're concerned, this is a historical structure, historical assets, there's historical significance to this property, and I use the city as an example because for this one, you're the property owner. But for any kind of landmark designation locally, the owner has to consent, and there's a process that's followed to identify, and a report gets done, the state gets involved, and potentially the feds if it's going to be a national historic marker. The other is, a property owner like the Lawrence's here earlier can self-volunteer and say, I'd like some recognition, I'd like to be designated local, or we can identify and make a suggestion or some kind of collaboration. So some properties are already identified because they're within a historic district. Some properties have historic significance that, for whatever reason, have not been designated by some local landmark or national or state recognition. And so this one's kind of in the middle. It's, it's a city asset, but it hasn't on its own been deemed a local landmark, or it doesn't have a separate designation. So, so there are properties that have historical significance that have not yet been recognized.
If this were to be deemed a local landmark, and we decided we wanted to change it, can we do that according to your rules? Or the rules, I shouldn't say your rules, but the rules that relate to local landmarks?
I'm highballing anti because I don't know if I can give... It would be a legal discussion, too. There, there are ordinance, once it's designated a local landmark, on what can and can't be done. It does have some restrictions on the use of the property. Could it be changed? Yes. Do you hold some of the keys as to what the text amendment would be? Yes. So, but it does put restrictions by design to make sure that people can't, once it is a local landmark, they can't just come in and wipe it out without having to appear before historic preservation or go through some other hurdles to do with a desire.
So one aspect is to recognize history. Another aspect is to call something a local landmark. Those are two different things.
Right. We can recognize the historical significance, like, you know, without having to actually designate as a local landmark. And so that was kind of our thinking on this one, was that we would find a middle ground that preserved and recognized without, because I don't know, and what I've looked at with State Historic Preservation and even the Secretary of Interior's Guidelines, which is the national register, as Jim was saying, most of this require a structure or some kind of fabric, like there's graveyards and cemeteries that are on there. Mecklenburg Avenue in South Carolina was a monastery, and so the grounds are significant because of the historical use. On this one, I don't, I honestly don't know that we could get there. It is locally significant, but, you know, it would take a study with a professional coming in and making that determination, and quite frankly, it would cost significant amount of money and really lengthen the process. And so our hope was that we could find a local compromise to recognize what the public, you know, I mean, there are 1,600-plus people that have signed this petition, and, you know, we felt like it was our civic duty to, to hear those voices and figure out what they were trying to accomplish. And also, the Historic Preservation Commission with our charge, to make sure that historical assets were not just destroyed if, if there was a way to preserve them.
So if we find the middle ground, we make all the rules ourselves?
Pretty much. With our input, please.
No, no, no. When I say we, that's include, I mean, we, the City of Hendersonville and HPC.
Right.
The middle ground is, we make it up ourselves.
Right. And it's actually more beneficial than a local landmark, because if you did the local damn landmark designation, we are restricted by the text of the ordinance. So this gives us other opportunity to, to find a way to deal with the, because quite frankly, it's a unique property. It's, we have lots of city parks. We have city parks with historical significance just because the longevity of being more than 40 years. But this one has a putt-putt course, and quite frankly, the, the decor of the putt-putt course is most of what's iconic, because it's, they've been there for, I would say, I know they've been refurbished, but the concept pieces have been there 40, 45 years. So they are, some are thinking it's 60, so they are iconic and has historical significance in and of their own rights. So I think the discussion becomes twofold. What do we do with the site? And is there enough historically on the site itself, the dirt? Or is the historical significance in the improvements that may still be historically recognized if they move somewhere else?
Hmm. That sounds like good middle ground, that last comment.
I mean, I feel like at this point, it's important for us to say that this whole time, the people who have been on council now or have been on previous councils all agreed that the portions of the putt-putt that are the bear, the differently in marks that are on there, that it was important that those get moved with the putt-putt. And I think honestly, from what I've heard from John, we also have a journal from Laura Korn, so we have her own words or words of people that have gone there, and I really think that we'll be able to better historically recognize Laura Korn, because I know, like, when we moved here, I had no idea who that was.
Right.
And so now we would be able to, you know, maybe we can have a big plaque that tells the story and shows an image, and, and, you know, I would be okay if we wanted to put another historical placard where Boyd Park is now, just so when people go to visit the fire station, they can see that, you know, it was once here. Or on an Edwards Park where we're going to have it, we can say, well, that was across the street. You know, I feel like there's plenty of ways that we can honor the legacy and the history. In fact, I think there are probably better ways than it's being honored right now.
And I think, we didn't want to jump into the mix. We've had the discussions ongoing for, Jim's newer to the commission, but well over a year, year and a half, and at some point, it was premature. At this point, the plans are far enough along that we can see what the concept is and kind of where they're going to affect it. And so I don't, I don't want you to think that we've just been sitting back and waiting. It was just that this, at one point, we didn't know what it was going to look like. It was all discussion. So we feel like we're at the point now where it's tangible that we can try and start formulating some ideas and some solutions, and how do we maybe cross-reference or, you know, respect what's there while creating something new and refurbishing.
Yeah, actually respect the culture and the past. I mean, there are a lot of historic landmarks that have been moved, you know, around the country. And, but they've been, they've been, been preserved. So the point was that we didn't know what was going on, short of what was in the paper, and, and so it would be good to, to be in the loop there.
Right.
All right. Thank you. I think we can work with staff to arrange a time for some updates and explanation of what's going on, and make sure that the HPC is, is aware of everything that, that's being proposed.
We appreciate it.
So you may want to stick around. We're getting ready to have an update about the fire station.
I might need a snack, but I'm staying. We got, yeah. Here we go.
Because I think staff will need some guidance if, I'll wait and make my comment after we have the presentation regarding the fire department. I want to make sure I understand exactly what the direction of the case is going to be. So I'll, we'll have the update, and then we'll come back and...
Okay.
Ask my question.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, both.
Thank you.
All right. Let's have that fire station update.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, good evening. Here today to introduce Ashley Love with ADW Architects and Mike Carlisto with Edifice. So our architect and construction manager company for the Fire Station 1 project. So Ashley is going to provide an update on design and environmental sustainability features, and Mike is going to provide a project timeline and budget update, talk a little bit about the construction market and materials.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Ashley Love. I'm with ADW Architects. I have Mike Carlisto here, too. He'll be able to introduce himself. Thank you for having us, even. We just wanted to give you an update on the design of the fire station, fire station number one, that's going at the same location that the current fire station is. There we go. Okay. Want to make sure I hit the right button. This is oriented a little bit differently than north-south, just so you're aware. Main Street is along the top of the page, Church Street is along the bottom of the page, and then we have Bearcat Boulevard along the right side. What you see here is, the fire station now is a little under 20,000 square feet. We're at about 19,750. There are three and a half apparatus bays that are located in the center of the station that you see there. The station also includes offices for the fire administration, fire marshal, a training room, sleeping rooms, day room, kitchen, fitness room, and then various support spaces, bathrooms, mechanical, electrical, and then decon for the, for the station. Along the site, you see two parking areas. The parking area to, on the left side of the page, is public parking for public to come to the station. At the very tip of the corner is the memorial and some wooded trees that are going to remain or, and remain untouched. And then on the right side of the page, the parking that you see there along Bearcat will be staff parking for the fire station. A number of the sustainable items, we'll kind of go through a list in a little bit, and I'll hit some highlights, but a number of those are site-related. We're doing some pervious pavers in the parking lots to offset some of the impervious area that we're increasing. And then we have a rainwater collection system, as an alternate, but in order to collect some rainwater and to use that for irrigation as needed, and to possibly help with truck washing, too. You can't see it on this plan, but it is planned to provide structure and infrastructure for a PV system on the roof. If it's included in this project, it will be built along with the fire station. If it cannot be funded at this time, it will, the building will be ready for that to come along. So those will go on the top of the station there.
So Ashley, before you move forward, just...
And if you have any questions on the design, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions from the floor?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Good evening, everybody. Again, I'm Mike Carlisto. I'm with Edifice. I've been with Edifice for 25 years almost, coming up in May. As evident, as evident, excuse me, as Edifice has a lot of experience in public work and municipal work, I do myself as well. So, very excited to update you guys on what's going on with the project.
Yep, big one.
Okay. We're going to speed ahead. You saw a lot of this in the fly-through. And what I want to do is give you an update on where we stand with the, with the schedule. We are just leaving the design development stage of the job. That means we're about 60% through design and pre-construction. Little overview, when we put a project schedule together, it encompasses the whole process. When I say the whole process, we're tracking everything that the owner needs to do as part of the schedule, everything that the designers need to do, everything that the, the end-users even do. The fire, the fire department here, they're, they're moving off, off this property and going to another job. So, we're tracking all that, we're tracking all the pre-construction activities, the pricing, and then eventually we'll, we'll track all of the construction activities. So, a little snapshot of where we stand right now, here in February, just finished design development, and we're rolling through construction documents. So, construction documents are the documents that we want to submit for approval and permitting, and eventually build off of those. We have to submit to multiple entities, whether it's the state, DEQ, DOI, locally zoning here in Hendersonville, county for permitting, and there may be some others in there as well. But after all, have all those approvals before we can start physical construction. So, we track all that. And what we want to do is, is get all the, the, the design completed, and we want to get to the bidding stage. Before we bid the job, we're going to be pre-qualifying all of the subcontractors. Do the same thing on the police department and the parking deck project. So, everybody is vetted, they are qualified per their experience, their financial status, their ability to do the job, and the ability to man or, or put personnel on the job as well. So, leading up to that, we will put, we will receive bids in a public format, we'll probably do it here again. And then from there, we would build the GMP, the Guaranteed Maximum Price, that we would go to contract with for construction, and we would get your approval for that, and then eventually we would get local government commission, LGC approval as well. So, that's all unfolding to lead us to a start in September, and to avoid the festival timeframe exactly, so. And our construction timeframe, excuse me, timeframe, right now, this is very high level. When we get towards construction, we will take a deeper dive, you'll see a lot more activities for each trade, but right now, this is, is, is a good overview, starting in September of this year, and then we would love to be done and complete and, by November of 2023. The park project will also be going on at a similar time as well. Okay, so the, the juicy stuff. So, um, so back in October, we, we gave a budget update, schematic documents, it's about a 33% set of documents, it's somewhat preliminary, but there's enough information to know what's going on. So, our pricing was in just over $8 million. We get to design development in this January, and this is not all the market here. I will talk about the market conditions as well. But as you do on most part, or every project, you do your due diligence. You have to check and see what are the characteristics of the soil, is there any contaminants, is there an old gas station or anything like that? You don't have any of that, but the soils there are very questionable. So, what that has triggered is the need for the aggregate peers. You see that $134,000 value for those peers. That means that the, the soils cannot hold up the foundation and the structure of that building, so we have to do an enhanced, or, or like, they call it soil enhancement. So, that's there. We talked about the, the pavers and heavy-duty concrete as well, but also that those poor soils are going to dictate the need for a further structural analysis, for, in a seismic classification. So, this, because of those soils, again, this building is going to have to be a seismic classic D, which affects the foundations, the slab, the structural steel, it'll, it'll affect all of the bracing for the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, anything that's hanging in that structure. And that's all in case there is a seismic activity of some sort, and that building has to be able to, to balance and withstand that activity. Also, additional restroom fixtures, if it's a code item. Also, we have included the IT cabling, AV and security within our design and construction on this project too, and the police department was, was separate. And then I get to the, the fun part that everybody hears, the message we have to deliver, yes, market conditions had some effect here. It's a busy market. We're seeing materials stabilize a little bit, but the, the real challenge now is the lead times for products. Structural steel used to be four months, approval, fabrication, delivery, and start erecting the steel, now it's six, eight, 10 months. Roofing materials could be 10 months out, 12 months out. It's, it's created a volatile market, it's a busy market still for the subcontractors, but they're trying to hedge their bets because a lot of times, they don't know the pricing of that, of those materials until the order is ready to be sent to them and then to the job site. So, there's a lot of doubt out there. Good news, we have bid a couple of projects recently, one in Gastonia was about a 2% to 3% difference from our, our CD number to the GMP, we were happy about that. And actually bid a large school project recently, and it was about a 1.5% to 2% difference from the CD budget number to that GMP number as well. So, we're very happy about that, seeing the market stabilize a little bit as well. So, it's a lot of information I threw at you there, questions, concerns, I'm, I'm here to answer them.
So, the seismic one is for earthquakes?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, 12 years, I've never seen that as part of any of these. It's, that's great, no, no, I'm just asking. We are on a fault line.
Questions, comments, anything?
I do have one more slide. You mentioned, another gentleman up here was talking about value engineering, cost savings, we will continue to do that, we will continue to look for comparable components or products to bring the price down, but try to achieve the same look of the building. Our goal is, our goal is unlimited, but we, we want to get at least $200,000 to $400,000 out of this. We'll have bid alternates as well, some of those are adds, but we will also put in some deduct alternates to, to help the budget as well. That is it.
So, just, as the council is, is thinking about this, a couple of things that, you know, as Adam and I, we've talked, we met with Mike and Ashley and some of their team in the last couple of weeks, we're like, well, why is, you know, what's the soil issue? We've got a building there now, and, you know, that jumps in our mind, right? And so, it's interesting that it just, we all expected, there not to be an issue, but there is, but then, but if you think about it, and you look directly across the street at the, at the, the big dig that is going through the HHS football field, and knowing, I mean, I wish Mike Huffman was here so he could describe the, the handmade stone culvert that goes under the football field, and realizing that, you know, there is a stream that goes under the football field, and apparent, you know, it starts at some point back up by the high school, and it comes through the high school property and under the high, under the high school, under the football field, and then across the church in, in Main Street, and then ends up going through Edwards Park, and then daylights over in Cold Springs, Cold Springs Park, Cold Springs, the neighborhood over there. So, you start thinking about that, you're like, eh, that may be a reason that there's poor soils in that area. So, we, we did have those same conversations with Ashley and Mike, and, and our structural engineers and civil engineers about why are, why is this different than where we were? So, we can't answer that about the past and the, the, we don't know the foundation of the existing building, I don't think, at this point, but I think going forward, we'll be better off with this information, so.
And John, to that point, you know, when, when we first started this process, we heard, you know, if we're going to do it, create a 50-year building, right? So, one of our targets here with getting the soils correct is to ensure we don't have some of the water inflow and infiltration we see in the existing station, and we also need to be aware, because this is a two-story facility on the admin side of, of those seismic requirements. So, they maybe weren't as strict back when they built Station 1 back in the early 2000s, but it's part of code now, I believe, and some of the, the requirements there pushing the cost for it on the project.
Also because it's a public safety, sorry, also because it's a public safety building, it's of the highest risk category, so things have to be beefier in that seismic design. We, we don't want that facility, that facility has to stay up, so that's why it's, it's more stringent now than what it once was.
Anything else?
Well, at the current calendar, you guys may start knocking walls down the day they play their first baseball game out there, because there's a real big debate as to whether or not that football field is going to be ready in the fall, so this is going to be an exciting area of town.
So, that is a great segue, Councilmember Smith, to my question from the city council. Based on the presentation we had prior to this, as far as HPC, if, just looking at the council and the schedule that we have, just want to make sure staff understands that we still have the green light to continue moving forward with the schedule that, that Mike presented tonight, with the idea that construction would begin not, or demolition would begin not long after Labor Day in September, but with the idea that we would continue through with park development using ADW and Edifice, and we're hiring a special, or special, someone who specializes in mini-golf design, and utilize the information we have, that we incorporate the assistance of the Historic Reservation Commission, some of our interested community members, including offer family members of Ms. Corn to be, to participate to design a putt-putt that would be appropriate, or not appropriate, but would recognize the history of, of, of the Boyd Park site, as well as Ms. Corn's legacy. But that would be, I wanted to make sure that is the direction that we have tonight, that that's how this council wants us to go forward, because we are getting to a critical go, no-go point as far as spending large amounts of money and, and making some critical decisions going forward. So, I just, when I ask that question, make sure staff understands where we need to go, or at this point, does staff, and I ask those point blank, does council want us to put the brakes on and slow down and look at other alternatives, so.
I don't want to see any slowing down, I would like to see us move forward. That's my opinion.
I would like to see us move forward, too. I think it would be good if, you know, like, when we meet with the mini-golf people, that some, members from HPC could come in and maybe, you know, like we do with any project, like with the other boards, bring it before them, say, this is what we're planning, what do you think? And then I feel like the lobby, the lobby area could be, and the new fire station could be a good place where we could put up some photographs or something, and then maybe somewhere around the visitor parking lot, we could put a plaque. And I feel like that will honor it in, in both places, but still be able to move forward with the fire station, because it is so desperately needed.
I have a question, does, well, I know it gives you heartburn. How much does the $1 million or $1.2 million additional costs affect the various budgeting things that we saw to the extent?
Um, I mean, obviously it'll have some effect, we will, we're still in a pretty good interest rate market right now, so, and we'll be financing this project over a period of time, so it'll have some impact. But Adam, I think we're probably, you've been working with Brian on it, I think probably it's manageable within the budget to, to, as we spread that cost out over a number of 15 to 20 years, I think it's manageable, I think.
Yes, sir.
And if we're able to do some value engineering, we should be able to manage it within our budget.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll keep managing the, the project costs on this project, and also look at our other projects ongoing, right? We're not in a vacuum here, and this isn't the only thing that affects our debt service. So, we'll, we'll keep managing the project costs on the other items that we have coming up for debt, and then, you know, also look at the CIP prioritization timelines for that future debt issuance, and enter those into the model to make sure we're still in a, a good financial state. And when we come back to you in March and later on in the budget process, we'll have updates on, on that change.
I have one more comment. Ms. Jones, I know that you had mentioned about the petition, the online petition to save the park. I personally called over 50 people that I knew who had signed the petition, and asked them, were they signing a petition to protect the park or the mini-golf? And they said, we just don't want the mini-golf to go away, you know, we enjoy that. And I said, did you know that the city was committed to building a new mini-golf that is accessible for all the community across the street? And none of them knew. None of them knew that there were plans to move it or rebuild, and they were under the impression that they were signing a petition to not take away mini-golf from the community. And so, I didn't call all 1,600 people, I didn't have time to do that, but, you know, I do think that a lot of people love the mini-golf, and I do understand it's got a lot of historic aspects, but I also, I think a lot of people are really excited about the fact that there's going to be a mini-golf that everyone can enjoy, even our handicap-accessible children and grandparents and families, and so I just wanted to mention that, that I did reach out to a lot of people that I, that I had seen sign, and, you know, just to get an understanding of, you know, what made them want to sign the petition.
Anything else? All right. Thank you all, we appreciate your being with us and, and the update that we have.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Next is acceptance of Duke Energy electric vehicle charging station. Mr. Connet?
So, Mayor Volker, members of council, I'll ask Tom to come to the podium, just in case you have any questions, but I'll take the lead while he's walking up there and try not to steal his thunder. Tom has, under council's direction, got a grant to put in a EV charging station at Patton Park, and so we've got that grant. Knowing your desire to do that, normally we wouldn't bring this item, but there is one caveat, and I'll let Tom explain the caveat from Duke Energy, and we just want to make sure the public's aware and that council's aware regarding how Duke Energy will pay for the, the charging station.
So, when we met on-site with Duke Energy and, well, both of them are Duke Energy personnel, I learned that there was going to be a fee associated with charging your vehicle at these two stations, at the station, which is two cord station. I was not aware of that until we had our meeting on-site, and, and so that's the one thing that really concerned me, because I wasn't aware of it, and I didn't know how you all felt about that, so, which really spurred us to bring this to you, and just make sure you were aware of that, and if you had any concern about it, you know, we could maybe go back and either not go forward with, with the installation, or see if there's something, something else we could work out with Duke Energy. But those were the main things, there's, there's no cost to the city for any of the infrastructure, they're going to take care of everything, and, and do the installation, all the equipment, everything, signage, so, but they were going to charge a fee in order to kind of recoup some of that expenses.
Do we know what the fee is?
I do not know. I have asked, but I just asked today, and I haven't heard back from them, so I, I don't know what the fee is.
Going to say something crazy. Could we cover the fee? Like, are, we have other EV chargers, and they don't have to pay a fee for those, right?
Right.
People use them.
Yeah, but, and we pay for the equipment upfront, and then it's, it's, yeah.
I can't tell if those are dagger eyes or not, John.
We do, yep. And, and we, maybe we can approach with that and say, you know, we pay the electricity on this, could you not charge a fee to the public? I mean, that, we, we could ask.
I, I think electric charging stations, to pay a fee, that's the way of the future.
Yeah.
It's going to be a, it's going to be like the future gas station.
Yep.
I mean, yeah.
They're going to get.
That's true.
Somehow. And there are other free places that people can go to.
Right.
But it's actually like normal in other cities to pay a fee to.
Yeah.
Charge.
Okay.
And if they charge too high, they'll drive to Dogwood, charge up there.
Yep.
Yeah, Biltmore Park used to have a free charger, and the last time I was up there, they now have lots of chargers, and you pay for all of them.
What is the, what kind of rates, do you know?
I, I didn't check.
Just like swipe your little, swipe your card and plug it in? Have you, have you used it yet?
I, I haven't, because that's one of the things, you, you have to sign up for different, like, there's ChargePoint and Electrocharge and all of that, and I didn't, I wasn't there that long, I didn't worry about trying to figure out what app I had to download to use it, so.
Gotcha.
So, that, that might be one of the things, you know, how flexible is it for using it?
There's also one at Biltmore College as well.
Do you have to pay for that?
I'm, I'm not for sure.
So, should we just go ahead and accept it, and with the understanding that you have to pay to, to charge?
Right, it's better than not having one at all.
Yeah. Are you ready? Any questions? No, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I move that city council adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the grant agreement with Duke Energy for the placement of an electric vehicle charging station at Patton Park.
Is there any discussion? Not those in favor of the agreement with Duke Energy, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say no. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, lighting ordinance update.
Oh, boy. I feel like we need popcorn for this presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. So, my goal today is to share my now third-grade level understanding of lighting and its regulation. I'm fortunate enough to have a number of the members or participants in our ad hoc lighting committee here with me this evening. Mr. Gary Steinberg and Ms. Deb Bell have both been very, very helpful in bringing me up from a pre-K level understanding to my now third-grade level understanding. And so, if there are specific questions about certain aspects of this, I, I may point to them for their assistance. Some of the other folks who've been a part and part of the process to develop this to the point that it's at, and that kind of led to bringing it before you this evening, or bringing before you a conversation about it. Neil Brown, Peter Hanley, Hunter Jones, Tamara Peacock, and Jim Robertson, who are all planning board members, have been sort of participating in various roles on the ad hoc committee, with Neil serving as a subcommittee chair for this group, and someone who has a personal interest in this particular topic. And then Mr. Ralph Hammond-Green, who also serves on the HPC, has also been involved, in, in large part due to his early-on involvement in the conversation around dark skies, so. And we have had a number of public meetings, all of our meetings as a group have been public, and Mr. Fitch has been involved regularly, too. So, want to just say that we appreciate each of them and what they've done. So, to start, kind of go over a little bit about what we've come to understand are the components of measuring light, and I, at the very last minute, gave this presentation to Gary. He gave me a whole bunch of good feedback about changes that I should make to it, none of which I was able to make. So, my apologies to Gary, but I, I think hopefully my notes and some of my explanations will sort of amend the slides themselves, but, so, alumina is a, you know, one way, basic way of measuring light, and if you think of a sphere around a candle, and you cut a square foot hole in that sphere, one foot away from the candle, alumina is the volume of light that's passing through that. And so, while it's not, Gary's, one of Gary's comments was that it's not specifically a measure of intensity, it's a measure of that, that volume of light that, that's passing through. And so, it is an industry standard for assigning a value to the volume of light that's coming off of a particular fixture. They are quite difficult to measure in the real world, so these are typically done in laboratory tests, and then the lumens associated with a particular fixture is assigned to that fixture, and so, you know, said lamp comes with alumina rating from the factory. And as you'll see, one of the reasons I'm starting with this is that the regulatory components that are in the MLO and have been hacked at variously by staff to develop a draft ordinance for the city of Hendersonville are based on some of these measurements. So, lumina's the first one. The, another term or common term in the industry is the foot candle. The foot candle is that, you know, what alumina creates on a surface, the amount of light that hits a surface, and as you can see, one lumina in a square foot is a foot candle. So, foot candles are a way that are, that's a way that the industry uses to measure how much light is getting to the surface of an object, of a parking lot, et cetera, et cetera. So, there are standards associated with what these measurements are at, you know, for instance, a pump handle at a gas station, there are standards for how much light should be at that point. And so, a lot of the engineering, you know, illuminating engineers, folks who work in that field, who are developing lighting plans, are working to meet standards for what light is reaching particular parts of a site at any given time, so, and these are the measures that they're using to do that. So, a couple other items or components of, of light, and ways of considering what kind of light you have. This term color rendering index, CRI, I learned about within the last two months, but it is a measure of the, the rendering of color that a light provides. So, if you have a higher CRI, above 95, I don't know how well that, yeah, it shows pretty well on your screen, so it doesn't show very well here, you're seeing more of the color that you would see in a, under natural daylight. And the lower that number is, the less of a natural daylight-oriented color you're seeing. So, that is. So that is, uh, CRI. And there, the committee has, uh, developed some recommendations for a minimum level of CRI. Uh, and we'll talk more about that. And then the fourth component that I'll sort of talk about is, uh, correlated color temperature. And the, uh, color temperature generally is measured in Kelvin, um, and is related to, yeah, you, you gotta love this, John. Uh, this, this is exactly what I thought I'd be doing when I signed up for this job a year and a half ago. Um, color temperature is related literally to the heat that a, a filament produces. The correlated color temperature is what was developed to give a color temperature to LEDs, which don't actually produce light through heat. But, so CCT is associated with a K, Kelvin count, and that translates to, um, the color of the light. So the lower the K, the closer it is to a red-orange candlelight, higher, the, the more blue-white light it becomes. Uh, and there's a good bit of science around, um, you know, that's why they tell you not to look at your blue screen iPhone before you go to bed, that you should be using a red-orange light, that our eyes and our circadian rhythms are more severely impacted by higher Ks. And that's true about the natural environment too. So, the K rating of, of the light, 4,000 K, 2,000 K, whatever that might be, correlates to the temperature and, and the light, uh, color. Uh, and those have a variety of impacts. So there's also, uh, some recommendations around, um, trying to, uh, move more lighting towards those warmer colors, uh, and, and away from the brighter blues and whites.
Is it more expensive to have a light with this, as the blue?
So, we'll, I'll, we'll talk a little bit about expenses and whatnot. So we've, we've kind of got these four pieces, right? We have the lumens, we have foot candles, we have CRI, and we have CCT. These are four of the major components of lighting. Again, at the third grade level, if you want to know a lot more about this, I encourage you to talk to, to Gary afterwards. He's certainly, hopefully feels like he's informed me or taught me reasonably well to this point. So, within the, uh, uh, you know, so when we first started this process, you know, the, the terminology we were, uh, sort of researching initially was the dark sky, the International Dark Sky Association, uh, standards. And that's where the model light ordinance came from. And this is a, uh, slide from some of their work, um, that a stand, establishes sort of five principles for responsible outdoor lighting. And it was kind of part of that process. The MLO was created in 2011 and, um, there are, there's pretty significant changes in LED technology that have kind of come along since that initial creation. Um, but these sort of five principles are useful in terms of thinking about what, um, a lighting ordinance may regulate and which of these principles, particular regulations would impact and have a, you know, have some influence on. So you see, the first principle is useful, um, that it should all, light should have a clear purpose. I would call, consider this the most general principle. Uh, it's just sort of the, are you using a light for something that you need a light for? Um, and is a little bit more of a, uh, as you'll see, as I go through sort of the regulatory options, it's not one specifically applied to useful, right? That's just an assessment of whether or not it is. Targeted, I think, is significant. So targeted is the idea that light should only go where you want it to go. Um, that it doesn't bleed off of your site or, you know, uh, come off of the lamp at an angle that shines into someone's eyes who's walking down the street, that sort of thing. That it's shining where you want it to go. Um, the low light level, light should be no brighter than necessary. Basically, the idea that, um, you would not try to, uh, light something more than you need to. Uh, controlled, light should only be used when it's useful. So this is the concept of lighting management. Um, uh, you know, I bet all of the lights in the new fire station will be on those kind of room monitors where if there's nobody in the room, the light turns off on itself. That's basically this concept, only applied to the outdoors. Um, there are, in the MLO, kind of recommendations about lighting being reduced by a percentage in certain sites or turned off and then having motion sensors associated with it. And then the last one is color. So you, using warmer lights when possible, and that's that CCT component. So those are the five principles. Um, so to talk a little bit about where we are with the ordinance currently and what it has in it and, and, uh, where it, it has , uh, components that impact of those five principles, impact certain, uh, principles there. First would be shielding. Um, and this is the shielding of light. You can see from that image to the right there, the idea basically that unshielded light that just shines in every direction is very bad. Uh, and then you kind of go along the spectrum there with the idea that as you provide additional shielding in additional direction for lighting, you potentially, you are impacting positively, uh, sky glow and light trespass and other things that, um, for the dark skies initiative in particular, they're interested in being able to see the stars, right? So, but it also can have impacts to adjacent properties and things along those lines. So, uh, shielding can be applied to almost any fixture. Fixtures can be retrofit, um, with a shield, uh, you know, not necessarily to get the, um, best shielding with a retrofit, but you can certainly do that, particularly with flood lamps and things like that. Um, I'm going to talk about bug ratings, but compliance could be available, uh, could be done through fixture type and proposed location. So you will hear me talk about compliance because of course, if we put something in place, um, we as a community development planning division have to figure out how to enforce and actually apply it, which is not, not an easy thing, uh, always. So, and then it addresses one of the most common elements of undesirable lighting, uh, as established by the standards. And then cons, cost of retrofit unshielded light. So a lot of the pole lights, uh, in the city of Hendersonville are Duke owned. You know, a lot of cases, a small business owner will have a parking lot, um, that they want a light. Uh, they'll go to Duke. Duke will say, sure, we can put a light on this pole over here. And those are oftentimes, you know, uh, unshielded floodlights. Um, and that's pretty typical. So you're not actually locating light posts, right, on a site. Um, and I, and I would note, you know, as it relates to our zoning ordinance, we currently don't require site plans for, uh, any sites under 5,000 square feet. So a lot of projects would technically fall into that category. Now there are a reasonable number of those types of projects that still submit site plans. Um, but for instance, Chick-fil-A, uh, is an under 5,000 square foot building, so technically doesn't require a site plan per our zoning ordinance. Um, so just as an example, small commercial properties, you know, may very well just be working with Duke to light their properties. And so then, potential additional costs for, uh, shielded new fixtures. Uh, so some of the, the cons associated with that. Um, this is, uh, bug ratings. So bug ratings are, are the industry standard for, um, basically determining a light's or a fixture's, um, ability to direct the light where it's, you know, where they wants to go. Um, and up light is anything above, you can see in the blue, anything above that 90-degree plane. And then there are, uh, basically two planes just below that that are considered glare. So it's high-angle light that comes off the light. And then as you get on down, you're looking at the red areas are the, uh, targeted areas where the light is intended to go. And backlight is light that, uh, maybe, is backlight. It's going off the backside of the lamp. Um, certainly situations where the, that certain components of this are not particularly important, right? So if your light post is in the middle of a parking lot, you're not worried about backlight. Um, backlight would be more important when, on a property line or something along those lines. Um, up light is obviously a big component of, uh, you know, the night sky component and keeping light from going up and minimizing sky glow. Um, bug ratings are assigned to what I would say is the vast majority of outdoor lighting produced today, um, particularly LED lighting. So that's sort of shielding, that there, there are bug rating standards in the existing sort of draft ordinance. Um, and I'll talk about how and where those are applied as we get going, but we are going. Don't worry, I'm going to keep moving. Um, so next, next component that is in the ordinance, and this is one that there's, uh, I would say a lot of discussion around, is a total site lumina limit. So, um, what the bug rating does is it makes a box, right? So you have a site, it makes a box. You try to keep all the light within the box. Alumina limit says the box can only be lit to this level, and it can't, it can't be brighter than that inside the box. So you have the box creation, now we're talking about minimizing the total amount of light inside that space.
So when you say inside the box, that doesn't necessarily mean the individual light fixture. That means the property we're talking about?
Means the total property. So the limits are applied in the ordinance via, uh, a total hardscape calculation. So you have 20,000 square feet of hardscape, you get this lumina limit.
So, does that relate at all to Kelvin?
Uh, no, it doesn't.
Okay, gotcha.
It doesn't. Um, so the, so lumina limits, you know, the, the reasons for having these would be potential to reduce the impact of individual sites, new development or redevelopment on the nighttime environment, right? So you're, you're limiting the total amount of light. And again, compliance could be evaluated with fixture type and proposed location, uh, total count of lights and, and lumina output, output of those lights. Um, the cons, uh, depending on where the limits are set, uh, you, what we've talked about thus far, the discussion thus far has been, um, you know, number one, new sites could be held to a much different standard. Of course, there's no standard for this today than existing sites. And so it could create some incongruencies in lighting on sites, uh, throughout the city within the public realm. Um, there is the potential, and, uh, this has been one of the topics that we've discussed, that, that could conflict with recommended standards. And I may be wrong that they come from IES, but basically recommended standards for the safe lighting of various types of sites, right? So I mentioned earlier that there's a standard for how much light there is at a gas pump handle, you know, things like that. Um, alumina limit has the potential to, to, uh, to, to impact that. Um, and then retrofitting non-conforming sites may require significant changes to the site plans. So, um, if you had five lights on the site, um, to light the entire site, and the lumina, the lumina limit could potentially impact where the lights needed to go, um, to light a site, when bringing it up to, to standard, yeah.
That last one that you have there, um, with regard to retrofitting non-conforming sites, I don't know if this is a fair statement I'm asking you. If someone were putting in newer lighting systems, in general, would these be more energy efficient than existing lighting systems?
So, so in terms of their energy consumption, LED would be more energy efficient than, uh, legacy lighting solutions.
Right. So as far as these changes go, upfront costs, yes, lower energy costs down the line?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, operational costs would be low.
Right.
Uh, and I, I will note on this slide, so one of the things that, um, so we've brought, we've brought this to the business advisory committee a couple of times and had some conversations with them too. Um, so some of the concerns and questions I'm raising are related to those conversations. And we, uh, one of the big components or questions that they had for us was, okay, you've established these standards in the ordinance, how would they apply to recently approved site plans? And so we have been working with Deb to get our hands on some of those and, and to review them. So I know we're working on trying to get Chick-fil-A, and she's been working on some other, uh, sites in the city. Um, and, so we do intend to do that so that we could apply a real, you know, we could take the ordinance and apply it to a real world, um, and recently approved and installed nighttime lighting, outdoor lighting situation. Yes?
So in regards to the lumina limits and certain spaces that have a certain level, I would assume that the organizations that govern that, whatever level it's supposed to be, would have a lumina limit built into those guidelines already, would they not?
Uh, well, so.
It's so new that we don't have that.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So, the organization in North America that does that is called IES, it's the Illuminating Engineers Society, and...
Oh, Gary, come up. Sorry.
Yeah, so, so there's an organization that creates national standards for that. Uh, and they basically create a recommended light level for every application, every lighting application you can think of. Banking ATMs, gas stations, parking lots, roadways, uh, hospital entrances, you know, uh, and all this indoor lighting should have been designed against IES standards. Um, so they recommend light levels. They don't recommend, uh, lumina limits, other than they collaborated with the International Dark Skies Association to create that model lighting ordinance, um, for, for outdoor lighting. And so, in general, the recommended levels and the lighting ordinance are intended to be self-consistent with respect to the lumina allowances, uh, you know, provided for a site, uh, to, to be able to meet the recommended levels. They're not intended to be inherently in conflict. There's some possibility that they could be, depending on what modifications you make to it and how you choose to apply it. But fundamentally, IES says, if you're a parking lot, uh, in this kind of, if you're a parking lot in a rural, uh, community, uh, with an average light level that's generally low, then you light to this level. If you're a parking lot in a high-density development effort, uh, area, then you light to this level. Uh, but they, they don't generally set lighting, they don't generally set lumina limits. They set light level recommendations for the site, for the application involved.
So lumens are not related to light level?
Lumens, light, light fixtures put out lumens.
Yeah.
And you have to have a certain number of lumens to create a light level.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
So they are correlated?
They're, they're correlated, yes.
Sure.
The more lumens out, the higher light level you can create.
Please don't test me when we're done with that.
And this is Deb.
This is the, this is the phrase, and I'm the applications person, so, 42 years. Miles per gallon on your car.
Uh-huh.
All right. Manufacturer gives you a list that says, here's what the miles per gallon are on your car. Now, if I take that car and I putt around town at 15 miles an hour, probably going to get whatever it is. But go out on the interstate and run 75 and stop-and-go traffic, those miles per gallon are going to change, correct? Lumens are just, truly just a measurement. That's all it is. Foot candles are always recommended practices, as we talked about earlier. But they're very dependent on your site. Uh, a gas station, would I put a light pole in the middle of a gas station site? No, I wouldn't. So that means now all of a sudden I have to look at the perimeter to do the lighting. So now my ability to light my lumens per square foot could change considerably. I used to say I could light the whole world if I had a tall enough pole, right? But you can't. You can't always do that. And that's where I think it gets a little, you have to look at the application. And this is sort of a miles per gallon way to look at it.
Mm-hmm.
And we all know that all cars are different, all drivers are different, applications in like with lighting are different. Did that help a little better?
Yes, it did. Thank you. Ms. Bell, I just have a quick question too.
Yes, ma'am.
Do any of the, uh, MLAs or the current, um, proposed ordinances address safety of said lighting or any type of?
Not specifically. Let me answer. You want to answer first or?
Yeah, well, the IES recommends
Recommended practice.
Has, has recommended practice. They call them RPs. And for any given application, there's a basic recommendation. They also have guidance that they publish for security needs. So if you have a site that's a high, high security risk, then they would apply a multiplier to the recommended light levels for it. So, so... So the IES does have guides for it, but it's a site-specific decision.
Okay. And that's not currently in the MLO?
Well, not in that specific wording.
Does the dark sky ordinance have safety as a factor?
It has language that allows for the application of factors for safety. It makes a basic recommendation based on what it calls lighting zones. So I kind of reflected that in the, you know, rural communities might be very low average light levels. State parks or national parks are intrinsically dark places that you don't wanna light for a lot of reasons. You know, high-density developments have different levels. So any of those, you could apply a security multiplier to it based on IES recommendations.
And there was discussion about the Hilton Head lighting because they had to change based off of the sea turtles, and I've read a lot about lighting ordinances, so.
It's a little different in Hilton Head because they include residential lighting, and as I understand, the purpose of your scope of work was not to include anything other than commercial.
We'll get to that. I'm gonna stick my third grade understanding back in.
At least, we're about eighth grade.
So, so this is one, so what you just heard was kind of the light levels versus lumens kind of conversation. The MLO used lumens on the site as the limiting factor, and so that's kind of what our current draft ordinance has, 'cause that's what we started with. What we, the conversation that we've been having is that the IES light levels are important to consider in that process. So, two components I've talked about so far, shielding, light levels, next one is light management, which our lighting ordinance, I'll be honest, I hacked this out of the draft lighting ordinance that we have, it's in the MLO, and I'll talk a little bit about why I made that call, and you can tell me I was wrong to do so, or that it was okay. So this is about control and low light levels, and there are a lot of pros to these, energy savings and cost savings, and function in of lighting, and the need is linked. And I talked a little bit about this when I was talking about control, but basically, the idea that you would, in the MLO, it was set up as a curfew, that after a certain time within the community, 10 to 11 p.m., it was the general discussion, that lighting levels on sites would be reduced with automatic equipment, that the equipment would automatically either reduce the lighting by a percentage, or it would turn it off. And that lighting could be turned back on via motion sensors or whatever it might be. There obviously were components of that that would allow for sites that needed to be lit for safety reasons to continue to be so, but that the general approach would be to work towards having that curfew in place and having lighting levels go down at that time. So there's some, you know, obviously there's equipment costs with doing that, there are some, you know, there's upfront costs which, to the lumen limit component, you know, could be offset in the long run by lower energy costs, potential safety concerns. For us, the reason that it's not in there is the enforcement challenge component of this. We're not really built as a department to, we're not built to enforce an element that would require us to visit sites at 11 o'clock at night, number one. And generally, I think, you know, when I was reviewing what our potential challenges within the community were as a starting place for a lighting ordinance, we have lots of unshielded floodlights and other things like that, and so parsing out which ones we were gonna try and bite off and have a morsel that we could fit in our mouth at one time. So it is a, an important component though, without a doubt, of a dark skies ordinance, a complete dark skies ordinance. Yes?
So in the research that you've done, in cities, for example, that have a lighting management aspect, I'm assuming they have somebody hired to do exactly what you just said?
So, I don't have an answer to that, I don't know what the staffing environment looks like, you know, in those communities, that's certainly something that we could look into more, you know, but, but, any of these elements, you know, staff are currently reviewing site plans with the regulations that we have in place. Any additional regulations that we would add would require us to spend a little more time reviewing those plans. So, something like that, which really could be a note on the plan, but, you know, in terms of enforcing an actual curfew or having that be, to a certain degree, we'd be putting the note on the site plan, and-
Right, so in other words-
It would be up to the site development process to actually put those in place and to do so. And the other challenge there, obviously, is that at the outset, you would have a significant number of non-conforming sites. So, you know, the vast majority of lighting installations within the city that are outdoors do not have any kind of, you know, curfew or reduction in lighting standard in place currently.
But I guess, the management I'm talking about is not just like it cuts off at 11 o'clock, it's just, in general, if we have some ordinance in place, the only way to know if they're actually following it is to see the lights at nighttime.
Correct, yes. So I'd be sending a code enforcement officer out at midnight.
Right, so just like we do stormwater, where we look at their stormwater systems, I think annually, make sure they're working, we're going to have to have a person that's gonna go around at nighttime and see if these lights are doing what they're supposed to be doing.
If you're doing proactive enforcement, and versus, you know, a issue report.
Right, okay. Thank you.
And there's also issues in distinguishing overflow light and measurable type of enforcement, correct? Like, it's hard to actually measure the-
The light off of a site, right, absolutely. So you, I think what you're saying, Jen is, or Councilmember Hensley, excuse me, is that the light, actually happening off of a site out in the public, us to go out and measure with a light meter and determine that's not compliant-
Right.
Is very difficult, and that is true. The, the first two components do have an element of site plan review that we could establish at the outset, you know, the bug rating of this lamp is X, we've determined that that's within our ordinance. Whether or not that was operating exactly as it should on site would be much more difficult to interpret. The lighting management component is even a little bit harder, you know, there's not a specific site plan element other than a note that we would be able to review. So yes, that is very true. Let me get through the last one, and then we'll talk about what's in our ordinance. So this is the last one, ordinance CRI and CCT, standards for the usefulness and the color. These are, in some ways, the most straightforward, LED technology has gotten, as I understand it, much, much better at both color rendering and at being functional at lower K-values, so functional in that 2,000, 3,000, 4,000 K-rating. And the recommendation that we've talked about thus far is having a 4,000 K-rating. So, go to the next one. So, what the ordinance currently does, and obviously there are a lot of specifics to each of these, but just so that we're kind of aware of the broad, high-level components that the ordinance is addressing. It does include bug ratings, and it establishes bug ratings based on where a lamp or light is on the site. So if it's close to the property line, the bug rating is different than if it's in the center of the property, with the idea, again, that you're creating the box, right? So you're keeping light on the site. It does currently include lumen limits, which are based on hardscape, total hardscape of the site. So again, that, and then we've talked about having CRI and CCT requirements, so basically minimum standards for each of those, and the light, lamp is given that standard. It applies via the zone, the lighting zone, to commercial and multifamily development, so all of our zoning ordinances, which permit commercial and multifamily development, are included. It has a stream buffer zone with enhanced requirements. The enhanced requirements are related both to the bug ratings and the lumen limits, and these, this, all of these components were, you know, based on the MLO, and we, you know, we've kind of adapted them to the local conditions to the best that we can. And then the residential-commercial transition zone, this is the idea that where commercial abuts residential, there is perhaps a stronger desire to limit lighting in that area. So it's a 50-foot buffer where commercial property touches residential, where commercial lighting within that 50-foot would be, you know, again, based on bug ratings, and the commercial-residential transition zone is primarily built around the bug ratings, there's not a change in the lumen limits within that zone. So those are some of the things that are included. Some of the things that are not, it does not apply to any of our residential zoning districts, so single and two-family residences, and it doesn't include the lighting management strategies, which I talked about earlier. We don't currently have standards for street lighting in there. Most of the street lighting within the city is Duke-owned. There are some instances where there are developers or private entities putting in street lighting, but for the vast majority, street lighting is put in via Duke, and it would require coordination with NC DOT and Duke and a number of others. And then it does not mirror, and so by mirror, I mean be exactly the same, the standards that are established in the MLO, but it is based on the approach that the MLO takes, which is, again, that model light ordinance that the dark skies folks put together. So, some of the concerns that we've heard in talking, specifically with the Business Advisory Committee about this, the impact of lumen limits on existing sites has been a question that they've had, and that the primary, one of the primary questions that's sort of been returned to each time we've talked with them is, you know, how would this impact a recently approved site? You know, at the end of the day, it is gonna have some impact, right, on recently approved sites, but being specific about what those impacts are. And then, we had, in our last conversation, it was a more, a broader conversation about needing to regulate light trespass within, between commercial uses, commercial properties, and whether or not that was a component of the ordinance that needed to be, that needed to be there, basically. And, you know, kind of general questions about the specific problems that are being perceived and why that required regulatory oversight is needed to address those. So, I just wanna highlight some of those, recognize that there are, you know, obviously components of this that will impact the business community, and to reflect that there are some of the questions that they have, are hopefully being shared somewhat here. And I'm raising these because we're looking to establish, to some degree, the variety of opinions that exist out there on this particular ordinance, which range from, you know, dark sky advocates who would really like to see, you know, a very stringent dark sky application of the lighting ordinance, to business owners who are concerned about what the impacts to their individual sites will be and to the site plan review process. So, general goal in providing the update to council this evening is to get some feedback and, you know, direction on, or redirection, on what we've been moving forward on, as, and again, I'll kind of go back to the, you know, we're looking at shielding, we were looking at lumens, I think we've got work to do there, but maybe more broadly, appropriate lighting levels as a component of the ordinance, whether it's comfortable with everyone to, at this point, not take on the management, lighting management component, and the CCT and CRI components. And so, you know, at the outset of the ordinance are some purpose statements, and so I'll sort of finish with those, and just, you know, give you all the opportunity to react, hopefully, to the components of the ordinance that we've talked about, and to the purpose statements, and whether or not you agree with those. So, the ordinance, I think, accurately reflects a purpose statement that it is designed to minimize adverse off-site impacts of lighting, such as light trespass and obtrusive light and sky glow, as applied to the zones that it's applicable to. So again, it's not being applied to single-family and two-family residential, but it is being applied to commercial and multifamily, to curtail light pollution, reduce sky glow, and improve the nighttime environment, and thereby helping protect the natural environment from the adverse effects of artificial lighting at night. And we have had a number of conversations here recently, and so I would ask, you know, the fourth and final goal being to facilitate lighting design, which promotes a safe nighttime environment while minimizing the undesirable elements of outdoor lighting. So, that'll stop, hopefully, that was reasonably productive for you all. And Gary, I know, and Deb are both available to answer questions too, and I can't say enough about how helpful they've been in this process. We would not be anywhere near where we are today without their input, so.
Questions, comments?
Yes, but I'll wait, 'cause it looks like you wanna jump up.
No, I'm still processing.
First of all, Lou, wow. I'm just like, yeah, I mean, I agree, I mean, that was-
Yeah. Thank you.
That was an amazing intellectual challenge. Wow, so, that's very impressive, just trying to wrap your head around what all this stuff means. I can't imagine Thomas Edison had any idea this was coming when he invented that incandescent light bulb.
Yeah, right.
One thing, is there anything in the ordinance that has, you must comply by this date?
So, the MLO does have that. We had, it's been discussed, I am gonna check my retirement calendar and get back with you on a suggested date. But, so-
Okay, it must be done by Lou, whatever that is.
So, I, we have discussed that, we did spend a lot of time in reviewing the ordinance on the non-conforming section, and aligning that with other components of our zoning code as it relates to non-conforming, 'cause that would be, you know, what triggers compliance with the code. We have, you know, variety of zoning standards out there, there are non-conforming sites that maybe don't meet our current landscaping standards or things like that, there are triggers that require them to bring their entire site into compliance, and then there's, you know, threshold, and that's associated with a threshold, so, right, if you invest 50% of your property value back into the property, it has to come into compliance. If you're under that, only the new construction has to be in compliance with the code, the existing facility can continue, there's some maintenance standards in there.
And that's any type of code, that's not just light.
That's everything, and it would be, and we worked to align what our current code has with what would be in the lighting ordinance, but there's not what's known as, oh, John, help me out, that date, sunset, yeah, the sunset date, at which point, all compliance would be required. You know, those can be really, you know, we've talked about them on, along the lines of, you know, lighting, outdoor lighting will pass its useful life at this timeframe, and so you could have one that sort of represents that by the time you get to this point in any lighting that's been installed today that is non-compliant, it's gonna be past its useful life, and they're gonna need to do an upgrade to the lighting in general, but we don't currently have that in there. Gary, do you wanna speak to that? I know, come back on.
The only point I would make is, I'd say the useful service life of outdoor lighting is somewhere in the 20 to 30-year range. The poles are usually designed for maybe 30 to 50-year service, but the light fixtures themselves are 20 to 30-year service life. So if you were gonna set a sunset date where you wanted to, you know-
It would need to be before then.
Well, no, you would wanna make it roughly consistent with the service life- Well, no, you would want to make it roughly consistent with the service life of the products so that it doesn't represent an undue economic burden, because they're going to replace that light fixture sometime between 20 and 30 years anyhow, and that's a good opportunity to, to make a choice that's in compliance at that point in time. So the, the least impactful sunset date would be 20 or 30 years from now, if you wanted to fit, you know, set one. Somebody's going to replace that fixture or repair it sometime after 20 years, probably.
Okay. So you mentioned that we don't have anything about turning off lights in parking lots that aren't being used. That was the light management part.
Right.
Okay. Is it possible that you could give to us a place in this world where they do that? Like what that would look like?
Uh, Deb, do you have any examples of that?
Walmart's probably the one we're probably both most familiar with. I spent 30 years at GE and then 10 at Hubble, and Gary's still at Current, I think's the name of it. Ironically, GE just bought Hubble, so they're one company now, so anyway. Walmart had a criteria that at a certain time, they would put a dimming sensor, it actually incorporates into their energy management system, and it would dim, I think it's a 60%, roughly 60%?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it differs. I mean, you can dim it to any level.
And, and it still maintains the, the light, the light quality, I guess, is what I would say.
Not the light level, but the light.
Not the light level, but the light quality. With an HID system, you didn't always have that opportunity. If you dimmed it more than about 60%, you'd get light fluctuations and a lot of crazy things going on with magnetic Bell. The electronic drivers that they're using now don't have. But Walmart probably did that best, but it was, it was typically after hours. There was actually a gateway test in Anchorage, Alaska, that I was fortunate enough to participate in, and they drove us by, it's snow everywhere, first of all, right? So they drove us by and they literally dimmed it by about 30% each time. These are LED products. They changed the color temperature one time. We all picked that up. The next time we came through, they had dimmed it about 40%, so it's now 60% light level. We didn't notice it. We didn't notice it. Now, if you get even little dimmer than that, now here's what happens. If I'm a car lot next door to a convenience store, and I dim it, you're going to notice it. So it's all relative to what's around you. That's, that's the biggest problem. You know, do you want folks to know you're open for business, or do you want vandals to know you're available for graffiti? So that's the problem that you run into.
But my question is, is there any town in America that requires this?
That requires it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Probably Huntsville, Alabama, would probably be the one that comes to mind immediately.
First off, so the whole state of California requires it. California has Title 20 and Title 24, and a key component of that, energy conservation policy or regulate, regulatory environment is lighting controls. So you, you can't build a commercial site in California without lighting controls.
Can you shift right up there to the microphone?
We got people on Zoom that are listening.
Yeah, okay, so, so places where you can possibly see it. Anywhere in California, because Title 24 is a, is a statewide regulation and all, you know, all new commercial development there has to adhere to those things, both indoor controls and outdoor controls.
How about on the East Coast?
On the East Coast. How about we identify some places and, and get back to you on it?
I just would like to see what that looks like.
I know that, I know that Taos, Taos and Santa Fe actually enforce it, and they actually do their roadway lighting. So they're, they're dimming street lighting after hours. And they're, and they have a rationale, a strong rationale for it, in that they have an observatory nearby, and so it's kind of out of respect for observatory operations.
Sure, a little bit closer than that, if you.
Yeah.
Mission Hospital, maybe with Mission Hospital.
But I'm talking about a town that has an ordinance that says thou shalt do.
Has an ordinance? Asheville, Asheville has some dialogue in their ordinance to that effect, but it's very specific, and that's why I brought up Mission Hospital. The parking garage, there are residential areas around the parking garage, and they literally have those dimmed so that motion sensors, at a certain time they dim anyway.
Right.
As motion sensors, the parking parameters drop down, but the egress and ingress driveways stay the same.
Okay, so I, I, I mean, I'll search myself. We don't really have a good municipality to like, if we were to do this, what this looks like. We'd be figuring it out on our own in some ways, unless we went to California.
And part of it, you just alluded to the difficulty of enforcing.
I got you. Yeah, I totally understand. There's no way you get around this without hiring somebody.
Absolutely.
Like Stormwater, to go look at how the lighting is. I, I totally get that. Streetlights are not included. Is there a reason why streetlights are not included? Because that is, I would assume, like, one of the major sources of light.
It, it is. Again, bite-sized, trying to tackle one piece at a, at a time. I do think that that would be a lot of coordination and, and conversation with DOT and Duke also. And we've been in some conversations about streetlights with Duke in not-too-distant future, or distant past.
But haven't they already been putting those in? At least I've seen some around.
They have been installing newer, and I think that's a Duke effort.
I think any, any major utility doing contracted street lighting for municipality, or even DOTs now installing street lighting, are installing LED, first they're installing LED fixtures, because that's the, the technology solution that's commercially prominent now, but they're all zero-up light and probably improved backlight control. So in Hendersonville, you probably, I know we have a lot of old GE fixtures that are still HID, but Duke has been installing mostly fixtures from Acuity, I guess, at this point, and, and Cooper and others, but, but those are all.
Voluntarily being done.
It's, yes, it's, it's, it's their solution. The, the, the gap is when they install utility pole-mounted floodlighting for low-cost site lighting, for small sites, like these 5,000-square-foot sites or, or small commercial sites, where they're not doing dedicated lighting poles as a part of the site design, and they're using existing utility infrastructure, and they'll put a floodlight on a pole, and what they'll put up is unshielded. And so something like 30% of the light output from that unshielded floodlight just goes up into the air, right?
Played basketball as a kid around a lot of those.
Right, yeah, we all did, right? And, and you can drive down any street in any community, whether it's Hendersonville or anywhere else, and see a lot of it, because that's the solution that utilities have for low-cost, general-purpose area lighting. And they don't put a shield on it unless somebody complains. So the street lighting, you know, the Cobra Heads or, you know, the street lighting solutions are all going to be zero-up light, relatively good backlight control fixtures as they replace those, as that 20-to-30-year service life runs out, and they have to be replaced because of electrical failure or maintenance choices, or whatever economic reason they have to do it. It's really the uncontrolled, unshielded floodlighting that creates the problem from the standpoint of what Duke deploys or what any other utility deploys for general-purpose area lighting. And the, the streetlights will fix themselves. It will take 20 years, maybe, for them all to come out of service and be replaced by appropriate fixtures, but they will fix themselves over time.
Yeah, and, and one thing is, is we talk about, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, right? As we talk about economic impact, and, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, so, you know, we have the LEDs out, and in some cases, recently, we've heard from citizens where the bedroom may right be under the light and it's too bright, so we asked them to place the shields to read the electrolyte. Now we're being charged an extra, there's an extra charge to put this, to put the shields. So not only we're paying for the rental of the lights, we're now, if we had to put a shield on it, it's an additional cost to put the shield on the lights that Duke Energy is charging. So, you know, as, as we look at economic impact, the number of streetlights that we have, just, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. There's an increased cost, so.
I think one other key point about the streetlights that probably didn't come out is in the context of the CCT and CRI. So when you replace, most legacy street lighting is what, what's called high-pressure sodium lighting. So it has kind of this inherent narrow spectral characteristic, and it's yellow-ish, and it has very poor color rendering. So we talked about CRI of 70, 80, 90, 100 is as good as you can possibly do. HPS lighting is, is CRI of 22, so it has very poor color rendering. But it's, it was historically a very high-efficiency source, and so it was used in street lighting extensively. And most of what you have as legacy street lighting anywhere is high-pressure sodium. As you replace that with LED lighting, you're going from a yellowish light, which a lot of people actually prefer, to a very white source with very high color rendering. And so two things happen. Your visual system says, man, that's bright. And it can be the exact same light level as measured on the ground, but it might be perceived as twice as bright. And the other thing that happens is HPS is 2,200 Kelvin, that very yellowish color. It's a low color temperature source. And when you shift to most LEDs, it's going to be 5,000 Kelvin, 4,000 Kelvin, 3,000 Kelvin, or 2,700 Kelvin, and so it's inherently perceived as bluer. And it is, it, it's biased towards that end of the spectrum, but that also triggers a lot of glare reaction, both psychologically and physiologically. And so as you're, you know, if you're, if you're trying to retrofit street lighting over time, what you really want to do is bias the choice or bound the choice so that you don't put things that people are going to inherently object to, because it went from 2,200 Kelvin to 4,000 Kelvin, right? And if you go to Duke and you aren't specific about it, you're probably going to get a 4,000 Kelvin light picture, because that's the highest efficiency and the thing that they sell the most of. But if you put that in a residential neighborhood, you're probably going to get complaints the day after you install it. So the choices you want to make is for residential street lighting to be as low color temperature as is kind of commercially available, which is 2,700 Kelvin, and you don't want to put neighborhoods for, full of 4,000 Kelvin lighting. You might want to use 4,000 Kelvin lighting on arterial streets, like Four Seasons or some other places. You might not want to use it downtown, because you're trying to create a certain aesthetic, you know, a historical aesthetic that's kind of more gas, you know, gas lamp oriented than, than arc light oriented. So, so you, you need to be selective about what color temperatures you choose to deploy your air, and bias towards lower CCTs to avoid creating community reaction to what they will perceive as blue light, because they're used to very low CCTs in, in their existing street lighting.
That leads to my last comment, which is why 4,000 Kelvin, not 3,000, or something lower than that, based upon what he said. I'm talking to Lou now. You said 4,000 Kelvin.
So informed by these two also. So 4,000 is basically, as I understand it from our conversations, it meets some of those commercial applicant, application needs for light level in a way that, you know, the 3 and the 2,700 can have an impact on those.
Close curtain, elevation.
Yeah, the CCTs, yeah, the, the security camera footage, those higher Kelvin ratings provide better.
CRI.
CRI, so that's the color rendering. So it makes the video footage that the CCTs are taking better.
Okay, and I would say you should view 4,000 Kelvin as probably a recommended upper bound, right? Nobody in this community is going to be happy with somebody installing 5,000 Kelvin. People might be comfortable with 4,000 Kelvin. They would probably prefer 4,000 Kelvin under a gas station canopy, or, or possibly, you know, at a convenience store, because it will inherently make the site look brighter and at least psychologically safer, whether actually safer or not. But outside of those kind of commercial scenarios, the, the bias should be towards lower CCTs.
Okay, thank you.
I view it as an upper bound with always a preference towards lower CCTs.
Councilman Smith, if I could just address your question earlier. I did do a little bit of homework. We did a survey of commercial property owners, and right now, nine out of 12 respondents are roughly 75% tell us that their property, they're on their property, they're leased lighting from Duke Energy. Duke Energy's philosophy is I will turn it off when the sun comes up, and I will turn it on when the sun goes down. There's no throttling back. You're welcome to put dimming on it, but they're still going to charge you the same rate, but they won't provide it to you. So just wanted you to be aware of that. And also to let you know that in the 70s, when you were still toddling, we were bringing busloads of law enforcement in to GE to tell them that the, the brownish light from high-pressure sodium was really good light compared to the mercury vapor lamps that they'd been, that all of us had been used to, right, that bluish color. So we talked a whole generation into that, and now all of a sudden, we're going from the brownish light back to a, not a bluish light, but more of a, I call it more of a sunlight.
It looks pretty blue. In my neighborhood, it does, I would agree with you.
Not the purple lights. Those aren't supposed to be purple.
Okay, well, the purple ones, whatever, they look, they look purple.
Hey, can you explain that, because I think maybe members of the public don't realize that those are defective?
It's the LED chip itself, I think, isn't it? The phosphorus deteriorating off of it.
Yeah, so, so a, a white LED is a, is a blue-violet LED with a chemical coating on it. And the chemical coating converts the blue light into yellow light. And those particular fixtures, the chemical coating has failed and has come off the base semiconductor part, and all you see is the blue-violet light coming out of it. So those are light source failures.
It's almost like blue-violet, like.
Yeah, it's, it's blue-violet.
It's really boom, right on you.
It's like 410 nanometers or something. It's, it's very blue-violet.
And that's the way they started. When they started, they were 7,000 Kelvin, so it was very blue when they first came out. But Duke Energy, most of the utilities across the country in the last five, six years saddled on 4,000 Kelvin. GE came out of the gate with 4,000 and 5,000, and I think you pretty much, 4,000 is probably about your max, your sweet spot now, I guess.
Well, that's fine. I mean, I got you. Thank you, I appreciate, thanks for answering my questions.
Okay, thank you.
So you wonder why you don't have an ordinance in front of you yet? So, I mean, so.
I think we started out just not wanting to shine light up into the sky so we could see the stars, and somehow it's gotten very.
Well, I know a lot of terms that I never intended of knowing what they meant.
Jeff started this.
So Jeff says he didn't start this.
I disagree with that.
He swears he did not want dark sky compliance. He said it was too much. He wanted something that was better than what we had, which was nothing. So that is what Jeff says. And he would, he would like that to be on record.
I'm sure he would.
I'm sure he would, I was in the meetings, so.
So, Will?
The current lighting ordinance has shielding.
So, so.
What, what do you want from us tonight?
Yeah, so basically, what, what I'm looking for is direction as it relates to, to the, to the four kind of regulatory components that I talked about tonight. You know, shielding being one, the, the light level being the other, as long as we're all okay with light management not being in there for now, that we're leaving that out. And then the CCT, CRI, as long as we're, so basically, are we comfortable with those three, knowing that there's some concerns about the lumen limit component and that what may come back may be different than what's in the current ordinance? But that I would want sort of direction that you are interested in seeing that as a component of the final ordinance, or you're not concerned about that particular aspect of things. And then, so if, if those three components are reasonable to include in the ordinance, then the next confirmation that I'd be seeking is that the application to commercial and multifamily is appropriate, the stream buffer environmental element, and the residential commercial transition. And then if there are any other, those are kind of the broad umbrella pieces. I realize there's a ton of nuance in this, and I talked about some of the issues that have been raised so far, but those, those confirmation that. But those confirmation that, and/or redirection, that those are the things that you would like for this ordinance to attempt to accomplish.
I would like to pass on along information from the business advisory group who wanted to know what prompted this, like what is the purpose? They just, they asked, were we getting complaints? Were there citizens that were concerned? Were there issues about lighting? And so they were just a little confused how it all came about. I explained to them that we had some developments that had come in and they were, you know, kind of not sure about lighting. And then they were getting to, you know, going through all the steps with planning board and that kind of stuff. And then they were coming to us. And then we were, you know, having lots of lighting discussions and basically determined that we needed to have some sort of ordinance. And then from there, I guess there was a committee formed of some concerned citizens that took this MLO, this draft ordinance, which is like a couple hundred pages, right? The MLO. It was, that thing was massive. And that got really intimidating. And so is there a possibility that the lighting experts here could help draft a Hendersonville model ordinance where we are respectful of uplighting and stream buffers, that type of thing, but that we are also keeping safety in mind and also respecting our business community who invests a lot of money into this community and time and being respectful of their investment and their cost and their concerns as well?
So I absolutely think that that is feasible. I will note that at the end of the day, it's likely that a new ordinance will have impacts, you know, on businesses. We're talking about regulating something that isn't currently regulated in this format. So I do completely agree that we can continue to work through some of the concerns. And I think, you know, ones that I've heard in particular are related to the lumen limits and to those light levels. There's, not that there's not concern about the bug ratings, but that the bug ratings are really a well-established industry standard and that lighting that's produced today is going to meet those standards. And in a lot of cases, the lighting that's being installed on our larger developments is probably already meeting the bug ratings, even though we're not currently reviewing those. So I do think that that is possible. And, you know, I'd be the first one to say that I don't want to throw an anchor on a business or a small business. You know, having done the downtown thing for 10 years, I've got an acute awareness of what that's all about. But I also know that, you know, things like trying to get shielding on floodlights and elements like that would potentially have a cost impact. Certainly, that is our effort. You know, the question earlier was kind of, and I'm kind of gesturing toward our city attorney because this was a conversation that she and I had about our existing, you know, the existing reference to lighting in our current ordinance. It's, the way the language is written and the nature of the statement, it's very difficult for us to enforce or apply that in any kind of consistent way. It can be a tool for nuisance situations where we have a specific complaint from an adjacent property owner, but in terms of applying it as a standard, you know, we've had a conversation about that and there's some challenges to it. So, yeah, I don't know if I answered that question or not, but I'm trying to be transparent about the answer as it relates to adopting a lighting ordinance. I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to suggest that I bring a lighting ordinance back and I'm going to, you're not going to have anyone who's concerned about what's in that ordinance.
We can also mitigate the impact on small businesses, right, by putting in what triggers them to have to do it or putting in a sunset period that's 20 years from now, like.
So absolutely. So we have within our current zoning ordinance, you know, thresholds for review. 5,000 square feet and under industrial and commercial does not require a site plan. 5,000 to 20,000 square feet is administrative only. 20,000 to 50 goes to planning board and then 50 beyond typically is coming to you all as a CCD, always coming to you all as a CCD. So within that boundary, there are opportunities to say that this would apply to certain components or certain levels of development and not to others, you know. So that could be, that is not in the current ordinance that could be a topic. Obviously, the sunset, which is not currently in there, I'll note, if it were to be added, could be at a longer timeframe. So, you know, I think for us to continue moving forward, if there are, again, components of those three pieces that we don't want to do, that we don't want to get into shielding and that we don't want to get into those light levels, I think CCT and CRI is relatively straightforward. I don't think that that will be particularly hard to apply.
And up.
And uplighting, right. Yeah, as far as shielding is concerned, that uplighting, the bug rating component, as long as that is something that, yeah, I'm sorry, Deb, your point was that uplighting is relatively straightforward and that most modern outdoor lights are going to meet that standard.
I would share with you, Lou, that, first of all, I mean, this is a lot to go through tonight. I looked at it before now, but I was like, I have no idea what any of this means, you did the presentation. And I would like to personally take this and go to the police station that we just built and look at all these and look at that police station because I think it's probably a good example of good lighting, whatever you want to call this, and see how our police station fits with this. For me, that's what I need to figure out for whatever we put in the ordinance because I, you know, so I don't know what level we use there, but it doesn't have much light trespass. It looks like it was done very well. That looks like a good example of what we'd like to have, but I don't have to define it in lumens on that stuff.
Yeah, we could get, what I was going to say is we'll grab the lighting plan out of the, and kind of look at the comparison of what fixtures are there. Look at the bug rating, look at all that. And I can give you kind of an example and maybe, maybe there's a field trip in the future that, you know, we can.
Light field trip.
I think, Councilmember Hensley, to maybe further address that question, I do think that actually reviewing some site plans with the ordinance will help facilitate a much more productive conversation, you know.
Debbie, you were getting Publix, right?
Chick-fil-A.
In Chick-fil-A? Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, so maybe that along with the police station.
We may have Walmart because we have the super center here in.
I will say, I do think whether we call it a sunset, whatever, a compliance date seems to me that that should be part of this. At least at some point, we know this is where the light has to be. Whatever that date is, there's a date that businesses can plan for, work into their budget, whatever that is, at some point in the future. Which maybe, the market may just already have done it for us, you know.
If it's 30 years out, probably everybody, other than.
I think 30 years is a little long. Probably shouldn't be that long.
Other than Duke installing floodlights on utility poles, you'll probably have it covered already.
And one final point from the staff. I think, you know, what we heard from, and I'll say this on jisp, I have to, is I think we started down the dark sky compliant road, not fully understanding what we were getting into, right? I mean, I think, I think it sounded good. I think it was well-intended. But I don't think any of us sitting at this table and the staff realized the complexity and what was involved in the model light ordinance and what it meant to be dark sky. I think what the idea was, we wanted to protect the community and to establish a lighting standard that everybody could live with. And I think we're going to work our way through it. And with all good compromises, everybody's going to be upset about it. Nobody's going to be happy, but we're going to work our way through it, I think. And I think we're, we had this good discussion, we'll keep talking about. And I appreciate Lou and Matt and the planning team sticking with this difficult subject and this highly technical. And we'll be better for it on the other end. But I don't think anybody intended really knew what we were getting into. So now we do. So there you go.
Thank you for that. I mean, I do think the components that you're working with are going in the right direction and we can figure out whatever the specifics of those components are later.
Okay. And that's helpful. That's helpful for us. We just want to confirm we're not. I knew it was going to be a bear. I'll just, I'll say that on public record. When we, when we first started talking lighting ordinance, I was like, this is going to be a bear. But yeah, no, that's good, good feedback if that's general.
Do you want a formal motion or?
I don't necessarily need to form a motion.
We're going to go back and, I think Lou will keep working, work with Gary and Deb.
Yeah. And continue to work primarily, you know, I think a key component being to work towards a site plan, existing site plan, reviewing that and establishing some levels of impact.
And thank you for all of your help.
Yes, please. Gary and Deb. We need them to come to help us.
We appreciate the opportunity to be involved. And I just want to say.
You are O Kelvin.
Lou is, and the contributors have done a lot of work. And while it seems complex, what they've written down and proposed is much, much, much simpler than the comprehensive scope of the MLO. So they're very close to the end game. Just get a little more understanding for people about what it really means.
Thank you guys very much. Thank you, Debbie.
Wow.
How many more lighting jokes is Jerry going to make?
Excuse me?
How many more lighting jokes are you going to make?
It's only two I can come up while I was talking.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. Dad jokes.
You know what? That's me.
Those are dad jokes.
Almost there. Okay. Formal implementation of 2022 pay and classification.
Mayor of all, members of city council, I won't prolong this. You've had several presentations regarding, we're glad to answer any questions, several presentations on the 2022 pay and classification plan and implementation. So we're asking council tonight to formally approve implementation of the plan. I think what we heard from the council at your workshop meeting is that you want the new pay plan, pay and classification plan to move forward with a 3% increase plus moving all positions to the 65th percentile immediately and then moving all positions to the 75th percentile effective July 1, 2022. In addition, I think the direction, what staff heard from council is that no position shall have a probationary completion salary below the living wage of 1,688. So we bring that forward for formal discussion and action tonight.
Discussion.
Well, mine's real simple. I just want to get on the record. So I am in favor of the 3%. I'm in favor of the living wage. I'm in favor of the 65%. But because of the tax burden that the 75% will go to, that's why I'm going to vote against this, considering how much we're relying upon a lot of things and revow. So 65% is I'm comfortable, I'm not comfortable with 75%.
I am not real comfortable with going to the 75% immediately or July 1. I would prefer to see it phased in, but I will go along with the majority on it. I think that the employees do deserve it and I would like to see it, but I'm not totally comfortable going to it right away.
Well, I definitely agree the employees deserve it. It's really a function of the tax increases and what taxes, the burden on the taxpayers in this short period of time. So that's, my comment is, I'd like to wait and see how revow comes out and then to see what it would take to get to 75% and what that would involve. So there's no question to the staff, no question you deserve it. It's just a function of weighing the requirements on the taxpayers to try to meet that goal in the short period of time and a significant amount of increase in spending.
Someone want to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the city council direct staff to implement the new pay and classification plan with a 3% increase plus moving all positions to 65 percentile effective immediately and moving all positions to the 75th percentile effective July 1, 2022. In addition, no position shall have probation completion salary below the living wage of 1,688 per hour.
Is there any discussion? If not, those in favor of the pay and classification plan as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, the ayes have it. It is a vote of four to one and the motion does pass.
No. I think Debbie voted no.
I'm sorry, Deb. I'm having trouble hearing you. Okay, so the vote is three to two, but it is still a majority and does pass. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Appointments to boards, commissions, committees.
Mayor of all, members of city council, you have two appointments. It includes, if I'm correct, it includes the same person. The appointment would be one to the downtown advisory board as a Main Street stakeholder. And then also as part of that position, that position would also serve, it'd be Joe Dynan. And they also, the advisory board is recommending, upon the request from the Tourism Development Authority, that a downtown business owner be appointed to the TDA. So the recommendation there, you have two motions, one to appoint Joe to the Main Street stakeholder position on the downtown advisory board as well as appointing him to the unexpired term as a member of the TDA.
Okay. There were no other applications for that seat. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that city council appoint Joe Dynan to serve an unexpired term ending June 30, 2023 on the downtown advisory board as a Main Street stakeholder.
Joe Dynan has been nominated. Are there further nominations? Not those in favor of Joe Dynan, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it and he has been appointed. Any further motions?
Madam Mayor, I also move that city council appoint Joe Dynan to serve an unexpired term ending June 30, 2026 as a member of the Henderson Tourism Development Authority.
Is, Joe Dynan has been nominated. Are there further nominations? Not those in favor of Joe Dynan for the tourism development, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it and he has been appointed to that as well. Thank you. City council comments?
I have one, Madam Mayor. And I doubt anybody is still watching, but here we go. Just to remind everyone that the city of Hendersonville is 175 years old. We'll be celebrating this all year long to honor the city's history and all who have helped make it in the vibrant community. It is today. Please look on our website to view the proclamation commemorative poster and other events that are happening throughout the year.
Right.
I want to remind everybody about that.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anyone else? City manager report?
Mayor of all, members of city council, just, we've included your contingency report. Anytime we use contingency funds that are already budgeted, we include that as a report to the city council to make you aware that we use those funds. The funds that we did use cleaned up our, or did as part of our mid-year budget amendment to clean up any urges we may have and prepare us for the rest of the year. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Anyone have anything else to bring before the council? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you all.